Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, January 23, 2017, to order. The time is 7:02. All members of this board are present, and I would kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, 29, 29A, 30, and 38. Questions, comments, or a motion, please?
Motion so moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of March 28, 2016, October 11, 2016, and January 9, 2017. Would we like to take these up individually? Okay?
Yes.
So we'll take the March 28, 2016 set of meeting minutes up first, and then if anyone has an objection, I'd like to take the other two up together, and we can proceed accordingly.
I will move to approve the March 28, 2016 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second, discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor? Okay, 3, 4, 2 abstaining, please. Moving on to the meeting minutes for October 11, 2016, and January 9, 2017, I'd like to take them up together. Questions, comments, or a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of October 11 and January 9 of 17.
Okay. Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to our next appointment, starting at 7 o'clock. We're running four minutes behind. I do apologize. It is with Colleen O'Brien, who is the General Manager of Redding Municipal Light Department, regarding the FY 2016, 2017 updates. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. O'Brien, and I'd like to welcome you to the table. And I do understand that you have guests with you. If you'd like to introduce who you have with you this evening, and the floor is yours.
Thank you for having us. I have with me tonight Jane Parento. She is our Integrated Resources Manager, and she's going to help me with the presentation.
Thank you.
I love your new screen. Very nice.
You're the first one to use it, so welcome.
Well, the first thing I want to do is bring attention to our -- this year's drawing. And so last year, we had a little man at the top of a mountain pushing off the peak, and we're staying with that for this year as well. We're saving about $200,000 per megawatt that we can shred during the peak. And so we've been using Reverse 911, sending out on our Twitter and a number of different social media to be able to -- an email to discuss with our customers when the peak is coming. It's projected, and we might call multiple peaks during the summer because this could be the hottest time, this could be the peak, and then a couple of days later, it's hotter. So the ISO New England grade will call another peak, and then they figure out what the peak is. And based on that, the amount of power that's saved during that time period can equate to about one megawatt being about $192,000. And so sticking with that, this year, we're -- what I'm trying to do is similar to how we educated our children in recycling. Recycling comes through the school program. They tell Mom and Dad, "Next thing you know, I'm walking around with a water bottle trying to -- and I will not put it down until I find a recycle bin." So we're trying to use the same type of education process for shredding the peak. This speaks to the children. They're shredding like skateboarding, and we're hoping that in our third grade training class, we have the art contest this year. We go in, and we teach the kids about, you know, the benefits of shredding so that eventually everyone will be aware of, you know, during that peak time period, you know, not to not use any electricity, but that's when it's the most expensive. And if we all cut down during those peak periods, we all make a savings.
Any questions on that?
Um, can we go to the next one?
I've tried to. I think we might have to just the page down. I think the page to computer is there.
Yes? Page down?
Maybe point it up. Show us the --
Point it up. Oh, there we go. Okay, great.
Thank you.
I'm just going to hit the highlights for each slide. You know, this is the second year that we've done our biannual update, so I'll skip over some of the stuff that we usually hit on unless you have questions. Oh, sorry. Page up. Oh, it's operating here.
It's sensitive.
Gipping.
Use the keyboard. I'm going to look down.
Use the keyboard. Okay. Okay, these are just our FY 2016 statistics. I just want to bring attention that in 2015, we had 156,000 kilowatt peak, and the peak for 2016 ended up being --
163 megawatts. And that occurred on August 12, Friday, August 12, at 4:00 p.m.
Some of these slides are because we do the annual town meeting with Redding, so it's based on the annual report. So if there's updates for this past year, we'll add them. I just want to bring note to us building GIS and collecting all the data. So with the GIS collection, we'll be doing a transformer load management program, which means we'll have accurate data for connected load. So down on the bottom here, where you see new services added, we'll be able to tell you next year, based on each town, how much new load -- connected load was made for each town. So you can see, you know, whether it's growing or, you know, how many -- if businesses have changed in that. Okay, great. Peak performance highlights. The Redding Light has terms and conditions which we refiled in June, and it brings all of our terms and conditions up to, you know, legal status, and they've been, you know, vetted, and they match more of what's expected across all of the utilities. If you like to take a look at them online, they're on our webpage. We also created a service requirements handbook. It's a pretty hefty book. It's about this thick. You can find it on the website, and this is soup to nuts. Anything and everything that you would like to know about Redding Light is in that book. As far as -- you could be an electrician. You know, "I want to do a temporary service. How do I do that? How do I -- how does that get billed? How does it get built? How can it stay there? I'm painting my house. I'd like to borrow cover-up for my services because I'm going to paint my house. How do I do that? Can I have it for free? When do you come back and get it?" You could be building a new subdivision. You're a developer. You want to know how many transformers. What do I have to pay for them? Who's going to come inspect the transformer pad? Every single thing that you can possibly think of is on this terms and conditions. And I did it for a couple of reasons. One, it's good business practice to have for any business. It's a good communication tool for internally for our employees and also externally, whether it's a customer or whether it's a developer, et cetera. So take a look at that in your spare time. You can do a right-click, find, and key in any word, and it'll come up throughout the entire document. The rates are also in there. Those are filed, but your service requirements handbook is not filed. So that's the difference between the terms and conditions, the rates, and then your service requirements handbook. We had a clean audit, no management letter. I'm going to let Jane talk in a couple of minutes on our new solar -- community solar choice program. We are continuing to implement our comprehensive short and long-term recommendations, which include the organizational study and reliability study. We created, as part of that, a grid modernization technology map, which we're moving forward with. We're on year two of that in our capital budget. As I stated earlier, we are doing a whole -- complete GIS data collection.
What is GIS? Do you want me to ask?
Yeah, geographic information system.
Okay.
So it essentially collects a latitude and longitude data point for every asset that you own, and then you would probably use something like AutoCAD or S3 or something, and you'd connect the lines. Once you're done with connecting the entire electric infrastructure, you can then put it on an engineering modeling system, and you can make the electricity move so that we can figure out how the load is swapped, if there's an outage, how you can bring the feeders back to bring people back in power. You can do long-term planning of, you know, we're getting -- we're right now, we're looking at different land in Wilmington that's over in the Ballard Vale area because we're going to be needing a new substation in more capacity in that area. So right now, we're just looking at different land that's right near the 115, the national grid. Is it NSTAR National Grid?
I think it's either National Grid.
National Grid, 115 transmission lines. So there's about three or four different spots that we're looking at. And so that's what it is. It's a data collection, same as if you use in your GPS in your car, and then you can turn it into a modeling system so that you can help to ensure the reliability. Is that answer?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Mesh network for our 500 club. The 500 club is our larger customers, and we've put in the type of meters. They're not all in yet, but we had a fixed network of meters for all of the residential customers. We didn't -- these meters that were installed several years ago, they didn't have the ability to take certain readings at the end, like voltage and stuff. So the large commercial meters, instead of putting in the same type, we put a mesh network over a fixed network. And these large customers, you're able to get data like power quality and voltage and current, and we're able to work with our customers and provide them a lot more customer service. And then certain residential ones will be changing out those meters on the end so that we can get a reading back from the field. So that's what a mesh network is. Peak reduction programs, we have a slide on that, and then our industry reliability Just a couple more. LED streetlights, I can give you an update on that. We have a slide. Internal, external communications program, the Twitter, and other things that I mentioned earlier about sending out information to our customers. Paperless billing objectives, we're still on target with that and creating dashboards. Capital and expense budgets went to a six-year, and those are going along really well. We're just entering into our budget season now. We placed 27 breakers and currently upgrading all of the relay systems at Substation 5, which is Wildwood in Wilmington. We commenced re-insulating Bus Substation 4 at Gar in Redding and provided all reliability upgrades that were recommended in that report. These are the brand-new maintenance programs that we implemented over the last year and a half. They're pretty substantial, but what happens is if your maintenance gets way behind, you go in, you do a pilot, you come up with your failure analysis, and then you come up with your new cyclic program. So these are all brand-new programs. They're all up and running. These really help to ensure reliability and safety, and so we're very proud of that big undertaking, but seems to be going well. Efficiency and peak reduction measures, these are pretty much the main areas where we're focusing on that shred the peak and what are the programs that we're offering and incentives with our customers for shredding the peak, whether it's a time-of-use meter or whether we're going through a tangent company to work with our customers to curtail load. We have all of our appliance rebates, and on that service requirements handbook, there's a section on the rebates, and every year, it gets analyzed as to what is the best rebates for what. You know what I mean? So it could be small air conditioning window units, it could be whole-house air conditioning units. So you have to look. That changes every year based on the trends and where we're going to get the most savings during that peak demand. We are also installing a 2.5-megawatt generating peak shredder at North Redding Substation. That's scheduled to go in and operational this June so that we're able to push the button and get 2.5-megawatts cut off that peak. A lot of the other municipals have one, some people have two, so we're doing it as a pilot, seeing how it's going. You know, the permitting process, the installation, everything has been going very smooth, so we're pretty proud about that.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Judy, if I may. I'm sorry. That was the peak shredder in North Redding.
Yes.
You explained that quickly, and it zipped over my head.
Oh, okay.
So can you explain? You push a button, and you save electricity?
Yes. Okay, so it's a 2.5-megawatt gas generator.
Okay.
Okay? And the permitting stuff is very easy because it only operates under 500 hours a year. Okay? What you use that for is when Jane and the rest of the crystal ball ISO New England calls for that peak, and you're able to hit that button and turn that generator on for that peak, you saved -- how much do we calculate?
It's about 200,000 per megawatt, so that would be two and a half times the two or -- two and a half times -- $500,000.
Right.
Okay.
So the buyback or the return on investment for that $2.3 million purchase is four years of hitting the button, shaving the -- shredding the peak, 2.5 megawatts during that peak.
Can you follow?
Just to follow up to that, so does that mean essentially that instead of the power being generated by electricity for a period of time, is power's running off this gas generator for some period of time?
Right. We're self-serving 2.5 megawatts. So we're taking it off the grid, we're producing it ourselves, and when you reduce that peak or you shred that peak, every megawatt was worth $196,000.
Because that's premium time.
Because it's premium time, correct. So the peak, again, you said, was it four?
It's 4:00 p.m. on Friday, August 12, I believe.
Sometimes it's at 5:00.
It's usually between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. on a hot summer -- on a hot summer month. And so this past summer, we enacted our Shred the Peak on, I think it was 12 different occasions. It started on July 5, and then they had another peak that increased above the peak that we hit on July 5, so it's a progression thing. And the final one for the whole entire New England, because it's not just Redding Lights' peak, it's all of New England, and that occurred on that Friday. And so this, along with our portfolio approach, is one method where we can control, but we really want to work diligently with our customer base so that if it's a residential, if it's a commercial customer, everybody that can contribute to that will help reduce that. And that's just one thing that we would be able to control from our side.
Right, because like a program we have with the customers, so maybe if they turn on a non-emergency generator or if they curtail their loads, we have programs where we'll split the -- you know, there'll be incentive for them to do that. But they may not necessarily be able to do it that day. So this is one of the number of things that are, as Jane said, in the portfolio where we have direct control over to save money.
So are you saying, and forgive me if I have this wrong, you have this generator, and you hit that button that one particular time, and you save that kind of money?
Right.
And you do that one time, and you save that kind of money?
Right.
And someone's in charge of watching that button and getting ready to press it type of thing? Like, not trying to be cute, but that's literally what you're telling me?
That's Jane with the button. That's how expensive electricity is. The electricity pricing is set for the entire year based on that one-hour peak.
How much money's coming off of the customer's bill? Do you have an idea?
Well, so one megawatt is 200,000, and one tenth -- one mil, which is one-tenth of a cent, is approximately 600,000?
Yeah.
$600,000. So if one-tenth of a cent is --
But my bill's not 600,000 dollars.
No, no. I'm trying to figure out how it's divided.
You need a button if it is.
I want to --
What did we say? It was $3 or $4?
Yeah. I think if you look at it, based on every -- an average residential customer who uses around 725 kilowatt-hours a month, it works out to be $2 or $3. Because we, on average, we use over 700 million kilowatt-hours, and so we would spread that savings across all those -- the entire customer base.
I'm sorry, if you could, I missed it. The cost for the magic button is $3 million?
Oh, I shouldn't have said magic button. It's 2.3 million was in the budget for the generator.
And then there's installation and you took connection.
Yeah, installation, site work, everything.
And you said last year, North Redding specifically used it 12 times?
It's not installed yet.
No.
It's to be installed for this June of 2017.
So who used it 12 times last year? Is that the number you cited?
We didn't use the generator because it wasn't installed. We called -- we called the event with our customer base through constant contact and emails and Twitters for those customers that would want to participate over 12 times last summer. And so the second phase is to install the generator and to include that in the portfolio.
Okay, thank you.
And those are monies that the 2.3 million, did you say, that's going to be put upon the consumer, I'm assuming, to pay for that?
Part of our capital budget.
It was put in the capital --
So they're not really saving the $3 or so, they're getting money put upon them to do this, in actuality?
But the return on investment is about four to four and a half years. So within four and a half years of using this generator, it's completely paid for. So there is no more -- it's paid for itself at that point. So between four and a half years and 25 years, when the --
So the customer won't see a savings to their bill until about five years out?
They'll see a savings because power supply costs are passed through, and we incur those costs as we hit that peak. So again, there's -- those are actual costs that we would incur, and what you're talking about is the capital investment that we're making. So that's part of our budget plan, so net, the net savings will happen in years five, six, but they will be receiving the power supply savings.
Can I just --
Yes.
Is it fair to say that the 2.3 million that you are spending on this has -- that's in the existing budget?
Yes.
So that cost is already being borne by ratepayers now?
That cost comes out of the depreciation fund, which is funded through 3% depreciation and put into the depreciation fund. And then your capital budget, right, is based off of what's in your depreciation fund and, you know, whatever else was in there originally.
Okay, so that 2.3 is not something that is going to be added to the bill, so to speak, at a point in time in the future? That's already built into your existing --
Our rate base.
Correct. Right. So this was put into the budget two years ago. I don't want to coin it the magic button.
Magic buttons.
No, don't say that. It's working very well in the other municipals that have them, saving a lot of money. I think the way to think at it, the Boston area is congested, and so electricity is very expensive in this area because we're at the end of a pipeline. So if you imagine Ohio with a wagon wheel of power coming in different directions, the competition of electricity keeps the rates down. We have one pipeline coming in, transmission, one way in is basically. So there's a lot of charges in the NEMA Zone Boston area. And so one of the ways that you can not have to pay all of these premium charges or not as much is you generate your own electricity in your zone. And so you get capacity savings, you get energy savings, you get these types of things when you're generating inside, and that's really what they want you to do. You know, not everyone wants one in their backyard. So this is a very small little unit. It's tucked in the middle of, you know, it's surrounded by DPW land. You can't hear it, you can't see it, nothing. It's just a capital investment that saves our customers money. But if you think about it and you have any more questions, feel free to call me.
Is that the origins of municipal light departments of days gone by? You were generators back in the day, were you not, before you started sort of pulling electricity off the grid? Was there --
Yeah, the Station 1 was --
Yeah, Station 1 generator. Yeah, small.
Which by and large, that doesn't happen anymore, except in these magic button situations?
Well, like Peabody Light has Water's Edge generator. There are some municipals, like Braintree has a couple of different plants. There are some that do. There was talk about a plant that was going to be built on the Andover-Middleton Line that, you know, I couldn't -- we couldn't wait to see what that was going to look like, and it just, you know, sometimes it doesn't make it through, you know, the political test or the permitting test or whatever. But there are some that have it, and when -- and the ones that have it, you know, it's one of the reasons why Peabody -- I mean, we're the second lowest in the state, but Peabody has the lowest rate.
And solar's another good example of that. A lot of solar is a lot of new generation. You know, the problem with solar is New England's peaking around 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, and solar systems are set up to maximize the generation, and that occurs between 10:00 and 2:00. So you do get some savings, but not quite. If you have, you know, a 1-megawatt solar, you may get, you know, 500 kilowatts instead of the full 1-megawatt because the peak is later in the day and depending on how the sun is set. But that contributes. So again, RMLD has taken a portfolio approach to say we're working with our customers, we're structuring our rebate program so that we incentivize peak reduction. We're looking at solar generation, distributive generation, and a whole portfolio approach. Okay. You'll talk more about solar later on in the presentation?
Yeah, it's actually the next slide, and I'll let Jane let you know about our new program.
So RMLD has developed a solar choice program. We've worked with a developer who's installed a 1-megawatt solar project on 326 Ballardville Street here in Wilmington, and what we've done is we've advertised that to our customers to sign up for the output and the cost and benefits of that solar project. So the way we structured it, for the first 12 months, the difference -- we, RMLD negotiated a purchase power agreement with the developer for the output, and so we have a filed rate with that. So the difference between the purchase power rate and the average fuel charge works out to be, on average, about a $5 cost per month if we allocate this to 200 customers. And so for the first 12 months, those customers will add on their bill, have a $5 charge associated with that. On the summer peak day this year, we will look at the output for that generation and see how much that 1-megawatt was generating on that peak hour. So if it was last year, it would be August 12 at 4:00 p.m. Whatever that amount that's being generated, a calculation will be made to determine what the capacity credit and those customers who sign up for that solar choice program will receive that benefit. So based on our modeling, it's anticipated that after the first year, customers should receive between a $2 and $4 credit for signing up for this project, and we've asked them to sign up for a 10-year period. So we have complete participation in that first Phase 1 project, and then that is scheduled, hopefully, to be online by February 1. The developer is just waiting for some tax incentive credits from the government in terms of for them to take advantage of that, and that will go online. So it's installed, it's ready to go, and it just doesn't have the okay to operate right now. But we're very excited. It was well-received by our customer base, and we actually have a waiting list of customers who are willing and waiting to see for the next phase, Phase 2 of our solar choice program.
We took the existing green choice, which was your -- you want to -- you want to participate in solar, and so you would actually pay somewhat of a premium in order for your electricity and your house to be served by green renewables. And so some of this green was being purchased outside of Redding Light. And so again, this is a way of bringing generation back into our service territory that helps to save money across the board for all of our customers. And then we asked the green choice customers, because we were doing away with that program, they had first dibs to go, you know, to buy into this program, and it was --
200 or 500? I think it was 200.
200 customers. So the next step is that we're writing an RFP to look at different -- because it can be a municipal building or it can be a private building. So either one, but we're going to write a RFP to look at the municipal buildings if Wilmington wants to participate in that, and it will -- it's -- and Jeff and I have talked about this before and talked to the other town managers about it. When you're dealing in solar, it's very difficult. You can't show up with the financials and say, "Okay, make a good financial decisions." You don't get the numbers until after the vendor, the developer looks at that particular site, which way is it facing, what's the roof look like, and then they put together the financials. And then we can make its -- Jane describes it as a three-legged stool where RMLD is looking at how much is the offtake from that project going to add to our portfolio, you know, is it a number that we can deal with? The vendor has to be able to build and get his tax incentives, and then the town makes personal property tax or --
A lease payment.
A lease payment. And so those three things are, you know, and they're not -- it's not a three people sitting down. They're negotiations to go individually, and those three things have to work in order for the project to work. And so you write the RFP, and developers come in and they look at the different rooftops or, you know, if a town's interested in a canopy or something like that, and then you get the financial numbers to look at after it's been laid out. Am I saying that?
That's correct.
Oh, right.
How about the residential side?
Yeah. These are the residents that are buying into the solar choice. Is that what you mean?
I'm talking on an individual person's line. Yep. Yep, we have, we have, we have over 50 customers who have elected to install solar on their roofs. We have a rebate program where we'll incentivize up to $2,000. The customer has to own the roof. We don't allow third-party vendors to come in and basically lease space on customers' roof to, to sell them electricity because that would open up our service territory to deregulation, which would be not beneficial to all our customers. So, the only requirement is that they have to purchase it. We have quite a few Wilmington residents who have, who have moved forward with that and who have received rebates and are, have solar on their roofs.
So, if you were to advise to the public that may be listening at home and they wanted to inquire about a solar option, what would you recommend that they do?
I would recommend that they could call us. We're a great resource. We often, we, if they're interested in purchasing solar, we often, we recommend that they talk to three different suppliers because everybody's prices are different. We have some vendors that have done, you know, multiple business in all of our service territory who are experienced. But it's very important because of RMLD's net metering rate that customers make sure that when the, the developer is providing savings to them, that it's based on RMLD's net metering and not the net metering of Eversource or National Grid because there, there, there are differences. And so, we'll be happy if a customer gets a quote for them to give us a call. We can walk through it with them, just to point out the differences and to make sure they're making an informed decision.
Okay, and I would assume that the condition of the roof needs to be, you know, the certain qualifying factors?
Correct. Yeah, usually it has to be a fairly new roof. If it's going to be replaced, they don't, the, the developer will tell them that it's not really worthwhile to, for them to put it on solar because then they'd have to take it off to replace the roof. So, there are criterias.
And does the homeowner own the equipment that's on the roof or is that?
They do.
They do. And then, in terms of if they wanted to transfer title of the property and essentially make a real estate decision during post-installment of solar, how does that transfer from one owner to a new owner?
That, that would be between the, again, I think once they purchase it, it's theirs, it's their equipment, and it comes along with the house. And, and so, a lot of the agreements that I've seen, it's their responsibility if they wanted to remove it, if they had roof issues, it really gets passed over from the developer to the homeowner.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on that?
If I may, I don't want to prolong it too, too much, but SREC was this term that you, for years I've been hearing it tossed around. And how does that apply to us in Wilmington or Redding Municipal Light versus the larger grid and what is it?
It applies to everybody equally.
It does.
And right now, the state is in, is in, in between state. SREC 2 has just been completed.
Okay.
And they're in the process of developing an SREC 3 program, and that's not been announced yet. So, the amount of people putting in new solar is kind of subsided because they're, in order to make the economic decision of how long it's going to be the payback, the SREC value that a homeowner receives contributes largely to how long it's going to take them to pay that back. So, because the state of Massachusetts has not put forth SREC 3 yet, homeowners should be aware that whatever numbers a developer is quoting are subject to change.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does. So, a homeowner that's exploring this will look at the cost savings in terms of their usage of electricity that is generated by the solar panel.
Correct.
And, and additional calculation on top of that savings is this SREC.
Correct.
So, it's those combined things.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yes.
I got it right.
One other little point, though, I, I'd like to add. National Grid and Eversource have millions and millions of customers and they, each customer pays into a mass collaborative pool. And so, if one person puts a solar in, their rebate's probably going to be higher. I mean, obviously, the rebate can be as high as how much money you collect from everybody to, to help pay for someone else's solar. And so, we're capped at $2,000 per installation. And, but sometimes people will say, well, you know, this contiguous town that's an Eversource or National Grid, they get a much better rebate. And so, I just want everybody to understand, they get a bigger rebate in, in that territory because of the, this 2% collaborative that, that they pay in on their bill every month. And, and then, you're combining that with millions of customers. And so, but when you compare the overall rate of the difference between an RMLD and an IOU, it's significant, you know, savings. So, you're getting the savings on an everyday basis as opposed to a, a solar rebate. We still have one, but it's probably not quite as large as, as an IOU's.
Understood, that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're, we're looking forward to, since this one, like a good concept, was sold out so quickly, we're looking forward to finding another roof shortly so that we can get it going and, and get some more people signed up for that, that great program. Okay, we'll roll through here. Economic development, I think probably Wilmington knows these probably more than others. I mean, we came in, we worked with Jeff in, in Ozram, and these are some of the things that we had addressed with Ozram. And we do that with, with other towns for economic development. Each of the four towns we serve has, you know, they have different views on economic development. And so, the RMLD would just like to continue to work with whatever Wilmington prefers. Linfield, North Reading, you know, everyone's got a little bit of a different take on, on how they see economic development. It certainly supports your local municipal in, in, you know, keeping that golden egg going and, and keeping the rates low. So, we, we do look for economic development. So, these are our incentive plans and, you know, our attractive package of why a business would want to move here. Annual reliability, I won't go into Sadie, Katie, Safi, but those are our industry standards. We're, you know, below certainly the national average. Some of the regional averages fluctuate a little bit, but we're pretty much below on everything. We do this because of two, mainly because when we look at what causes our outages, it's not so much to, to let everybody know how great we are and what our reliability are, but we really try to track what causes an outage so that we can, you know, focus our maintenance in that direction. You know, if it's, it's a lot of squirrels, if, you know, wildlife right here is 21%, trees 30%, which has come down since we started our new tree trimming program. Equipment, 36%. And that typically would be like a fuse melting for an overloaded transformer. It's not like stuff's blowing up, it's, it's more of fuse failures. And then, you have some smaller ones like vehicle accidents and weather and whatnot. So, those are the outage causes. Streetlight program, I have a couple of slides on that. This is the grant that we got from the DOE-R. Out of the 250,000, half was to be spent for municipal LED streetlight fixtures. So, we went back to the pilot program in FY15, and now, we are in FY17. We have one more year to finish up. If I can go, there's 4,606 LED light fixtures installed through January of 2017. So, if we look at this one on Wilmington, we, we basically in the left-hand column have all of the light types that existed, whether it was a high precious sodium or, or mercury vapor. The 50-watt high precious sodium, 100-watt high precious sodium, 250-watt high precious sodium, were all changed out with 25-watt LEDs. And so, on the right-hand column, just to go over the savings, there was a little minus of the savings on the 50-watt conversions because there was a capital component of the rate that was missing. And I think I had gone over that last year, so we won't labor on that bad news. But there was definitely a savings in the rest of them. $39,000 is basically a snapshot of what the savings was or will be compared to before we started this. So, for the town of Wilmington, you're looking at about 39,000. But I will tell you that, that, that can fluctuate slightly because every quarter, we,
every six months, the formula rate is subject to, to being trued up. So, it changes in July 1st and January 1st for the formula rate, and then, the municipal LED rates get looked at on an annual basis.
So, as this is fluctuate, that, that original savings has gone between 39 and 42, and it stays in kind of that, in that area because it goes up and down. You know, the existing lights, the rates might dip a little bit, the LEDs go up, the LEDs go down. But once the conversion is completely made, it's approximately between a 39 to a probably a $42,000 savings for the town of Wilmington.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
The, the other day, Saturday at the Mass Municipal Association meeting, Governor Baker was talking about a grant for LED lights, I believe it was streetlights. Is this something that, that RMLD would apply for? Or how, or maybe this is a similar program to the one that was previously put in for? Just was curious as to whether there's an opportunity going forward to get additional LED lights?
Okay. So, the grant that we started with, the 250,000 was a DOE-R grant. And so, out of the 250, 125 was for municipal and 125 was non-municipal, meaning our LED commercial rebates, residentials, that's where that money went to. I believe the one that you're speaking with, the MAPC, is a DOE-R that got awarded in December. And so, yeah, I think it was called the Rapid LED Streetlight Conversion Program. And I believe, from my understanding and our research, that that was awarded to in December. But we're going to follow up to see if the complete amount was, was funded and, and whether we would be eligible since we've already received a DOE-R grant for streetlights. So, we did follow up, George did email us, and, and we are looking into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Engines pole transfer program. So, last year, we, we did a joint utility notification program. Before that, it was, it really wasn't working too well. So, once the pole, so, let me back up. The entire territory is split into ownership and custodial areas. So, from an ownership standpoint, Verizon and RMLD owns each pole 50/50. That's ownership. And then, custodial is a little bit different. North Reading and half of Reading is, is custodian by Redding Light and the rest is, is under custodian of Verizon. That means that if a new pole has to be set, they set it, after the transfers are done, they have to take it out. Okay? So, what Engines does is it says, okay, Verizon has set a new pole, Electric, the ball is in your court, do your transfer. And then, the next person transfers, and then, the next utility transfers all the way down, and then, Verizon gets notification, they take the pole butt out. So, it's very important that when the ball is in your court, that you make your transfer because without that, you can't go to the next one. So, Electric always goes first, and then, it will go down through telecommunications, fire, and all the way down until the pole butt comes out. And we do realize that double poles are very unsightly. At the same time, we, we also are doing a lot of reliability upgrades. So, there are more, probably more double poles in the last two years than we have been for a while because we've done so many new circuits in Wilmington. This double pole status basically tells you that Comcast has two transfers, non-participating third-party, which I believe is your Wilmington IT. I think we have a girl's name is Kendra that we're working with. Okay, I'm not really sure still who's doing the transfers, whether that will be Fire Department. And so, we're getting her set up on Engines so she, she gets the notifications. I'm not sure what bucket is going to do the transfers, so we'll work with her on that. Redding Light has 58, but I will tell you that Engines just hasn't been updated in the last couple of weeks, but they've finished over 20 of them on Salem Street. So, those poles have been taken out. So, you can minus about 20 off of that. Verizon has 75, 56 pole transfers and Wilmington Fire Department, 72. Now, in speaking with George and, and Jeff, I believe that the fire, that the fire line went wireless. And so, basically, the fire line is, is abandoned on the pole. Am I correct, Jeff?
I believe that's the case, but I'd want to confirm that with the fire chief. They've certainly backed off of use of that, yes.
Okay. So, what happens is because of, you know, municipal law and surplus materials and things like that, Redding Light can't, or Verizon can't go out and just remove it. You can't remove the fire boxes and the wire or cut down the wires. And so, we do have, it has to be removed in order for the pole to be replaced or a double pole to be moved. That transfer either has to occur or it has to be completely removed and coiled. So, it's, it's, it's not like we can assign that to someone or to RMLD to, to take those boxes because you'd have to take the boxes, sell them on municipal and all your surplus policies and wire cutting and just gets to be a...
If I could ask a question on that, so, both with respect to the fire piece and I guess more, well, equally importantly, the fiber that we have. One of the things that Kendra Rosette, the IT person, has been trying to track down is the schedule for when these, when these poles are proposed to be relocated. Because from our perspective, the fiber, there's a cost that we're going to have to incur to have our fiber company, you know, go out and move that line. And, and so, we have not, there was no, nothing in the fiscal '17 budget for that. And unfortunately, because we haven't been able to get any answers to this point, it's not likely there's going to be anything in the fiscal '18 budget because I just haven't been able to get, Kendra hasn't been able to get the information, and so, I don't have any information to include. So, I guess it would be helpful for us if whoever the person is at RMLD could provide a, a schedule of, you know, are all 65 of these poles that have, is it 64, 65 that have fiber on them?
10, just 10.
Oh, 10, okay, so 10.
10 for the fiber and 72 for the fire.
So, when is the timeline that these particular poles are slated to be moved so that we can?
Well, the pole, the new pole is within three feet of the existing pole. The poles are already there.
Okay.
So, you have a damaged pole or a rotted pole that's there, and then, you put the new pole in, and then, you transfer all the wires over, and then, you remove the old pole. So, the pole is sitting right next to the, to the old pole. And you just want to take the old pole out, but you can't do that until the transfers are done. So, these are the existing status of what's being, whose ball in court we're waiting on to take the, the pole out.
Okay, so, all of these, I guess, are, it's basically as soon as the various parties on the line, on the pole, remove their piece, then the?
Then the double pole comes out.
Okay.
But I can, I'm not su, I can give you a, a cost, just, you know, just on the side, though, you know, not right now, but I can send you an email of, like, what it costs to transfer fiber. Just, shouldn't be too costly, but I can give you those numbers if you want so that you can compare them if you get quotes or something like that.
Okay.
I'm not really sure, I mean, I could think the Fire Department could probably give you their estimate of, you know, starting to cut down or removing their boxes in, in the fire line. It's probably just a matter of...
Who does, who removes the boxes and does the fiber, fiber transfer over? Is that something that the town has to do and incur the cost of that? Or is that something that you're, that you do?
This fiber, though, is owned by the town of Wilmington.
Okay.
So, they're attaching to the RMLD Verizon pole. So, you know, I don't believe, there's no attachment fee or anything, but in order to be an attacher, you have to make your transfers for your, for your assets.
So, when, when the town, I guess it's probably maybe five or six years ago now, created a fiber network to enhance the access for the schools in the town for computer purposes and communication purposes, there was a company by the name of ComTrek that was hired, and they did the engineering and ultimately, the installation or had a subcontractor install the fiber on the lines. So, now, for us to take those, those lines off one pole and put them onto another, we would have to contract with ComTrek or someone like that to, to do that.
There's actually a lot of companies that do fiber transfers. And again, I'll, I'll send you some prices so that you know what the ballpark is. At this point, it's just 10, you know, but it could be here and there. So, unless you have an agreement with the Fire Department or something like that to keep the cost down. But I'll, I'll send you some prices on that. Any more questions on ball in court or engines?
Like, did you have a question?
Yeah, if I may, is there a, like, that's, that's an important report. It's interesting. I never really would, whatever. So, there it is. What's the communication process? So, if I get the sense that... So if I get the sense that we, as a town, if we want to fix some of the circumstances with regards to fiber or fire or whatever, we have to initiate that and communicate with you and, and sort of get that ball rolling. Um, but then there's all these others, so is there a communication, is there someone that's managing and outbound communicating, hey, this is what's going on, this is the status of where we are?
Right.
What's the update from Verizon, et cetera, et cetera? So is that, is there an active communication going on?
Yeah, this Engines program is a software.
Okay.
And each person that has an attachment on the pole is part of this Engines, you know, group.
Okay.
And so Kendra is brand new, and, and she's being signed up to be an Engines member, so that she gets notifications, okay, ball in your court.
Got it.
Okay? So there's a person at the Fire Department, ball in your court.
Great.
In Verizon. So when the ball gets in your court, and you have, you know, the, the number that you have to do, whether you're transferring or pulling a pole butt or whatever, uh, you know, in the Engines reporter will tell you what the address is, every details about the pole, you know, a lot more information behind this.
Your next steps are there.
Right.
Cool.
No, just that the, when, when it's ball in court, it'll come in with the address, you just know you need to schedule that work, you know, and, um, because double poles are usually a, a big-ticket item with, with the towns, they're unsightly, and, you know, a lot of the towns wanna know why, they're ugly, I want them gone, what's going on, I want the addresses, who's responsible. This is why I went to the Engines, because before it was kinda like, hey, I gave the guy a call. Now it's a software, you log, you log in, you get notified, hey, it's your turn, let's go.
Thank you.
So it seems to be helping, and, and our GIS will help even more, just to make sure that everything that's on there is, is collected, and we're not missing anything. And that's it, thank you. Shred the peak.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the very detailed presentation. What I'd like to do is, um, turn it over to the members of the board, again, just in the end, to ask any, uh, questions, and then give any, uh, commentary. And Jeff, I'll start with you, did you have anything that, I know you asked questions all the way through, but wanted to give you the courtesy of going first, if you had anything specific.
Uh, I believe those, I think the questions were answered, thank you.
Okay, all right, and I'll start over here to my left.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to ask you a question, I mean, and whether you're here. I, I remember about twenty, thirty years ago, the Town of Wilmington was, uh, thinking about leaving and opening up its own power source. Back then, we were about sixty percent of the customer base or the user.
Yes.
Where do we stand today as a customer, say, twenty-eight years, not later, two thousand seventeen, do we purchase sixty percent, fifty-eight percent? I'd just like to follow up on that.
I think it's still about sixty, do you know?
Yeah, I can get the, I don't have that information off the top of my head, um, but I'd be happy to get that. I, I would assume it's about around the same, you're still the largest, um-
Yeah, the reason why I say that is because I know back then, I'll be honest, I thought it was a foolish idea for us even to think of, open up a power plant, but through negotiations, we end up working it out. I remember Alan, I think it was, uh, Mr. Rock and Alan Ames was, uh, on the, uh, committee there. Now, we were supposed to receive, and I think we still do, do we still receive in lieu of payment, a check from Reading Municipal Light every year?
Yeah.
And what are we getting, what are we getting now, Jeff?
Uh, it's about seven hundred and seventy thousand, I believe, a year. Uh, they're about seven fifty, seven seventy, I think it is.
I was just wondering, that's why I brought that up, because I was wondering where we stand today, so obviously it was a good decision back then to stay with Reading Light, uh, and we receive a payment lieu of, uh, taxes. And I'm just wondering, you were talking about, uh, saving costs, about that magic button, if I could refer it, I'm gonna remember that forever now. Uh, I guess it's less restrictive, it's less, uh, strenuous to get a permit for less than five hundred hours. If that's the case, what's involved, it's like over five hundred, if we're able to save some money in the long run, how, how bad, how tough is the permitting process to get something over five hundred dollars? You said it was pretty simple to get a permit less than five hundred? What's in detail if you were to say, all right, listen, we'd love to do this maybe fifty percent of the time?
Right.
How difficult would that be?
Well, you're talking about getting into the generation business, which would be excellent. I mean, um, I, I think there's restrictions on, was it over five megawatts?
Yeah.
Over five megawatt, yeah, anything under five megawatts, you can keep, um, behind the fence. And over five megawatts, you're, you're selling it into the, into the grid, so it goes through the ISO, um, commodity exchange or whatever.
Right, and the difference between a peaking plant, a two-and-a-half megawatt peaking, um, the way that it's engineered, it has a very high heat rate, which means it's not really, uh, the same type of equipment that you would run for an extended amount of time. Um, so it, uh, while it may be costly to run it, um, just, let me just use examples with numbers. Um, during peak period, during average days right now with natural gas commodity on the NYMEX, prices can range anywhere in the twenties to thirty dollars per megawatt hour. A peaking resource like that may cost a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars per megawatt, per, per megawatt hour. So that's not the same type of generation that you would install if you were gonna run it for an extended amount of time, given the way pricing is occurring in New England. It's averaging less than fifty dollars per megawatt hour on an annual basis. It's just during those peak periods in the summertime when, uh, demand is high and supply is low, and prices can get higher to three hundred, four hundred dollars, uh, a megawatt hour for the energy portion, and what we're using that for is not only the energy, but also the capacity. And so that, that's the difference between if we were to install a generator, it would look nothing like that generator, um, and it would have different qua-, uh, characteristics. Um, but, you know, we're always looking at that potential, um, footprint power is what they ended up putting in where, uh, the old Salem Harbor Station, so they converted from coal to natural gas, um, and that has a much more lower heat rate, so it'll be running, you know, instead of running at a ten percent capacity factor, it might be running, you know, thirty to fifty percent. Um, but that's based on the characteristics of that resource. So these resources bid into the pool, and based on the pricing, they, they get dispatched on or off.
The reason why I brought that up, I saw the general manager's eyes light up when we said about going to gen-, generator, light up, no one got that?
Yeah.
All right, whatever. All right, I'm surprised. But anyway, uh, no, I just thought I brought that up, because it just seems to me-
Good point.
... sense that, you know, we could actually save money in the long run, and it'd be something worth, uh, looking into. And I'm just curious, Petrino was, I think that was his name, is he still a member of the, uh, Reading Municipal Light?
Phil Pacino, yeah.
Yeah, Phil, yeah, I remember dealing with him way back when, yeah, all these book goodies.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Anything to my-?
Please, yeah, thank you. Um, you mentioned, I think, Colleen earlier, that, um, we're number two behind PBD or something like that, was that ranked in comparison to other municipal providers, or in general?
Yeah. No, we're, we're, we're way down there as far as the rate for all of the fi-, there's forty-two municipals now, forty-two municipals. Um, there's, there's not a lot that are, uh, able to manage their portfolio in a, in a way that we do to keep the prices as low as we do. A lot of them are a lot higher, and, you know, some of that, you know, a lot of that goes to Jane and her group, and, you know, um, it's a lot of work. You're, you're, you're constantly making sure that that, um, if we get into a power deal, uh, that we're getting the absolute best we, we can to add to our portfolio. Um, there are some other utilities that are in long-term contracts, like very long con-, contracts, that were not deregulated, 'cause that was one of the municipals, when, when deregulation came in, the municipals were able to keep their long contracts. But those long contracts are not as, um, uh, you know, they're, they're a little bit more money, and, and so their rate's a little bit higher. It's not necessarily that they're doing anything wrong, it's just that their contract portfolio's a little bit different than ours. And then when you put in generation, uh, like PBD, and you can sell in, in, as a peaker, or, um, you can-
Intimid, yeah.
You're selling, you know, you're selling in generation, or, and you're using those peekers, uh, you know, to offset theirs, and, and so that makes their portfolio even, even more, um-
Competitive.
Right, competitive.
I only live in Wilmington, so I only use power in Wilmington, I only pay for power in Wilmington. Uh, so I have no sense of what my friends that are N-Star or National Grid or, or Eversource, uh, customers are paying. Uh, so where do we factor, you've, you've given me some information, or a sense of where we are compared to other municipal providers, or other, other towns that have municipal power. Um, what about the big guys?
Yeah, we do rate comparisons every month, and when we look at Eversource and National Grid, our, our rates are thirty to fifty percent lower than those. Uh, and again, for customers who have only taken power from us, um, they're, they may be unaware of that, uh, but we are significantly, um, lower than National Grid and Eversource.
Helpful, thank you for that. Um, last question I had, you answered all the questions about solar, which were, well, there's probably more fa-, questions on solar, but I'll call you. Um, hydro, I, I've heard some discussion about potentially, uh, at some point in hopefully this, the not-too-distant future of this region contracting with Canada or, or Maine to generate electricity through hydropower. Now, we talked about solar and other things, does that, do you, have you heard about this? And if so, how, how do you envision that affecting our rates and, and, you know, that takes some of the strain off of the, the challenges you articulated about the one line of, of gas in the area, that, so, so if there's another source of power generation, does that help us?
It does, um, to a certain extent, but we have to build transmission to get the hydropower from Canada to, to New England. Uh, one of our concerns as Municipal Light Department is transmission is socialized through all of New England, and those costs have been increasing in the range of six to ten percent on an annual basis. So historically, right now, our, our transmission rates are around nine dollars a kilowatt month, um, and those are projected to increase, you know, six to ten percent every year. Um, so if we add another project, which increases, you know, millions or billions of dollars, um, those get, um, put into, uh, the rate of return, those, those, uh, those transmission companies, um, earn up to twelve percent rate return on that transmission that's built, and it's the consumers of New England that, that, that pay that bill. So why, the energy portion of it is very low and cost-effective, and again, they're going to, to negotiate that money, or they're gonna bid that energy into the pool, so that they will receive the thirty to fifty dollars per megawatt hour of energy, so it would, it would, it would keep energy costs low. Uh, my fear is that the transmission associated with it would be, um, significant increase to constituents.
We have hydro in our portfolio.
Uh, we do have hydro in our portfolio. Uh, we have, uh, in excess of seven or eight projects that are located in the New England region, um, primarily in Massachusetts and Connecticut, um, and that contributes to our, um, renewable projects or sustainable projects. So we have wind projects, two wind projects, one in New Hampshire and one in Maine. We have about seven or eight hydro projects, and then we have the solar project, which is at one Burlington, we have two megawatts of that, which is in our portfolio, um, and then the community solar project won't be in the portfolio, that'll be assigned to the customers who, who have signed that. So we have quite the diversity of renewables.
I applaud that, I, you know, uh, I don't wanna sound like a bleeding heart here, but I think we should have windmills and, and watermills scattered everywhere, and solar panels, I mean, we have, we have these renewable resources that I think we should be tapping into and leveraging to the greatest extent that we can, certainly from a financial perspective as well. So I appreciate you guys looking into that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is my right?
I'm good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Ladies, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, I do have a quick, couple questions. Uh, you mentioned at the very beginning of your presentation, the possibility of a new substation in Balladville, could you maybe expand upon that? Is that gonna equal any savings for us, is that just another?
Um, is it gonna equal what, a savings?
You talked about the possibility of adding a new substation.
The existing substation in Wilmington, uh, we just did some major maintenance to keep it alive, but it's, it's heading towards the end of its useful life. And so we've, even though the GIS isn't done, we've done engineering calculations for long-term growth, um, and, and where the capacity should be, um, positioned in order to keep reliability up. The Balladville area is growing very quickly, um, and the feeders to the Balladville area are, um, you know, they're not strained at this point, but, you know, when you're doing your, your projections, they're, they would be. Um, and so the long-term plan is to build a new substation to feed the Balladville area. In order to build that substation, it needs to be a piece of land that's essentially under or very close proximity to the hundred and fifteen thousand volt lo-, transmission lines that go in that area. And so right now, we're, we're talking to different, um, owners about pieces of land that meet that criteria in that area. Um, we would like to be able to come up with some kind of a, um, an agreement, so that we could go to the Town of Reading for next November's town meeting, in order to procure a leased land, and then start building the following year, so that it would come online, uh, two thousand and eighteen, I believe is what's in the budget. So that's, that's the longer-term reliability plan. And then the existing Wilmington substation would be turned into a switching station, which would just put more, um, flexibility into the system for, uh, for making sure that we have the right ties, you know, back-feed ties and things like that in case of, case of outages and whatnot.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I too, uh, am excited to hear that we're, uh, second lowest rate in Mass, that's correct, behind PB. Okay, and then, uh, I would agree with my colleague, Mr. Shump, I'm excited about the, uh, LED program you have going on and the solar options that are available to people, I think that's, uh, that's great. Any newer, uh, renewable energy that we can take advantage of would be awesome. Um, and I would encourage all residents to, uh, to help shred the peak, and I would encourage you folks to not be shy with that button if you get the opportunity. All right. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us, happy new year.
Yes, thank you.
So one quick, uh, thing as well is, um, in addition to just complimenting you all for the presentation and say thank you, is, um, just wanna say that from my experience as a consumer, and what I hear from constituent base out there, is that customer service and the, um, periods of outages for RMLD is, is really best-in-class compared to some of our neighboring communities, and we get a lot of feedback. You, Reading Municipal Light is usually the last to go down, and when there is an outage, uh, I just wanna commend your customer service department, and, and when DPW or any, uh, resident calls in, very responsive in terms of getting trucks out there and getting people on. Um, from my personal standpoint and my profession, I deal with, um, real estate sales, and so I deal with customers that don't have RMLD, and I could, I see the final bills, and I can see, uh, the rate differential, whether it's gas or electric, and I can definitely say that you, the savings that you quoted is absolutely true, and I've seen it, um, through other experiences. Uh, so I just wanted to leave you with that message, is that, um, what you're doing in terms of efficiencies and cost savings, and just customer service is being well-received, uh, within our resident base from the feedback that I've, uh, received out there. So I just wanted to extend that positive news to you and, and to thank you for your efforts, and hopefully we can continue on, uh, this partnership as we move forward and, and have mutual beneficial cost savings.
Thank you.
So as a, one homework assignment, too, is, um, between five-thirty and six-thirty, um, I thought maybe I had to replace my dining room light, 'cause it flickered, and then I was online to do some final research, and there were several people that reported on Wilmington's, uh, community board in different quadrants of the town, that all their lights were flickering in their house, so, um, I'm just saying to you, maybe it's a homework assignment, you might go back and make sure that someone-
Between five-thirty and seven?
Five-thirty and six-thirty.
The address?
Um, they were in different quadrants, some in North Wilmington, some in close to Town Hall, like, I live right out the backyard here, it happened here, over in North Wilmington, over near Silver Lake. And I know it's really windy, but it was several different areas, so-
Okay.
If someone can just make sure that, um-
That's funny.
We will definitely look into that.
I thought it was just me.
Yeah, it happened to me.
It happened in my house, I live just down the street, so it definitely didn't-
So, but it was also North Wilmington, so just, you know, I don't wanna spot you on TV and everything, just as a side, if you can take that back and make sure that someone doesn't-
Hit the button.
Uh, that sounds like the main feeder.
Just make sure it's, well, it's all.
So, but it wasn't in any one specific neighborhood, it was, the fact that it was North Wilmington and this, and over on this side is more of a larger grid, so, um-
Yeah, I would've been happy if it was just one house, but, okay, we'll, we'll look into that. But thank you for the compliment, and we-
I was just gonna say something to Madam Chair, I have a problem at my house, evidently, working with you folks twenty-eight years ago paid off, thanks.
But we will, I will definitely take back the, the, your kind words to the rest of the team, they'll appreciate it. They've worked really hard, um, you know, with all this maintenance and, and getting everything up and running, in the long-term planning. I mean, we've definitely, we're, we're definitely succeeding in that goal of, of turning from reactive to proactive, and, and I'm really proud of everybody, and so-
It has translated out, just everything, from the tree, tree trimming, to, you know, working with our schools for the balusters to make sure we have efficient lighting, to the rebate programs, and just, you know, everything that you just talked about in terms of, um, being on, on the front end of things. So it is, it is resonating into homes.
Good.
Thank you. So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, I just, I'm gonna pull this on, I go, take the button. And it fails. You're not supposed to take it out unless you're, just try it safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
All right, so we'll move on to communications, Jeff, please.
Uh, first under communications is a, a letter from the Chairperson of the Wilmington School Committee, Julie Bressard, I'll just, uh, read this into, uh, the record, it's, uh, with, uh, regard to an invitation to attend the Board of Selectmen's January ninth or January twenty-third meeting. "Dear Mr. Hall, I am responding to your December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, letter on behalf of the Wilmington School Committee. My apologies for the delay in response. I received your letter on January sixth, too late to respond in time for the January ninth Board of Selectmen's meeting. Acting on the advice of legal counsel, the Wilmington School Committee declines the invitation, uh, to attend the January twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen Board of Selectmen's meeting, or any future Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss Mary Delai's resignation and separation agreement. On January tenth, two thousand and sixteen, Superintendent Benton shared with you the MA State Supervisor of Public Records determination regarding the Board of Selectmen's request for a non- Records determination regarding the Board of Selectmen's request for a non-redacted version of the separation agreement. Please make note of Section 16 of the settlement agreement, the nondisclosure statement. Wilmington School Committee will not violate the terms of the nondisclosure statement. We understand the Board of Selectmen have requested the executive session minutes from October 3, 2016. We are waiting for determination from the MA State Supervisor of Public Records. We will comply with the determination that is put forth. Thank you, Julie Bressard, Chairperson Wilmington School Committee. Next is a letter from Rebecca Murray. She is the supervisor of public records. And this letter notes that she received a request for the information for a camera-ready review of the separation agreement that was assigned to Attorney Stefan Schori in their office for review, and this letter was dated January 5. Next, we have correspondence again from Rebecca Murray to Attorney Wa, who is the attorney for the school department. This is again with regard to the separation agreement. The letter reviews the history of my initial request for a separation agreement, the school department's response with some information redacted, and then the appeal to the supervisor of records. The letter goes on to address the public record law and the presumption that all government records are public, subject to certain exceptions. It cites a particular exception or an exemption referenced by the school department. And then in conclusion, it does indicate that portions of the record that were, where information was withheld or redacted was not supported by the exemption. The next piece of correspondence is a letter from Joanne Benton, again regarding the same matter. It just is directed to me, indicates, Dear Mr. Hall, following an in-camera review of the requested separation agreement by the Office of Supervisor of Records, I am forwarding to you a redacted version of the requested separation agreement. The redactions are consistent with the developed case law allowing the redaction of certain information that is personnel information and therefore exempt from the disclosure. If you have any questions concerning this matter, please contact me. And attached to that letter is another version of the separation agreement with redactions still made, but to a lesser degree than previously. Next is a memo from me regarding the open-
Can we ask questions on this?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Just a question on separation agreement to the town manager on number four. It refers to unemployment compensation following her resignation. Is the town on the hook for her unemployment after she, after this is completed on June 30, 2017, can she file for unemployment? And is the town responsible for that? Have we checked into that at all?
Well, it's dependent upon her status with her current employer. I think, I don't know what her status at the, you know, at the end of June will be with her current employer. If she, if there is a employment separation, it's my understanding that the town may have some liability in terms of unemployment compensation in that particular case because, and I don't have the specific formula, but my understanding is that should she become unemployed, that benefits would be paid by her current employer and to some measure by the town of Wilmington.
So I had asked the same question when I had seen the last redacted, and Jeff indicated that, you know, to date, Ms. Delai has not submitted an unemployment claim at this point. You know, my question that I had had when I had seen this was to know the length of time that we would be exposed. So in other words, when does the opportunity to potentially come back to the town of Wilmington, you know, in conjunction to Watertown where she's at now, when does that window of opportunity end? And I don't know, Jeff, if you have any insight to that.
I do not. I don't have any further information.
That would be the question in addition to yours, Kevin, would be, you know, would we have some responsibility? And it sounds to a certain extent we would. And then, you know, for the length of time, you know, when is this matter truly to a close, that that window is closed? Because, you know, someone's in a temporary situation and they, her temporary employment ends at the end of the school year, for example, this year. And I don't know that to be true. I'm just given scenarios. You know, is she eligible for unemployment to said date beyond that? And, you know, how long are we assuming any sort of exposure? Those are the questions that I have as well.
If I could, relative to the four letters the town manager read, you know, I believe we are chipping away in the right direction with small victories relative to the buyout with former Superintendent Delai in the school committee. I see us progressively getting better in obtaining what we want by being proactive. If we did not do anything, we would not know what's going on. And I think the board has taken the right course of action in pursuing these, relative to the contract, pursuing the various commissions that we seek relative to the managers, what he read just a moment ago. Thank you.
And I would say too, you know, I watched the last school committee meeting. Julie Bressad was very out in front, saying that, you know, they went through a chronology of events. They went lockstep into the fact that they received all this information. They've read it into their record. They've indicated that, once again, it's not that they don't want to work with us as a board. They understand that there's been some frustration, but they're simply, you know, working within the parameters of the settlement agreement that they have derived, and they're taking the advice of legal counsel. So, you know, in my estimation, this is just my opinion, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent. I feel like we have received what we are going to receive, you know, in finality is what I would say from my standpoint. Would I like more information, you know, in terms of narratives and backdrops and things like that? You know, I don't believe we're going to get that, you know, so I-
But we are still moving forward with the appeal. At our last board meeting, we had a vote that we would appeal to get the executive session minutes. So we're still waiting for that to take place as well.
Well, the, so the advice of town council is, and that was, I think, included in your packet, that they're, he's not advising to go that route, essentially. So-
That's why I'm bringing it up, because I did see it in my packet, and the board voted four to one to move forward with it. Unless it rescinds that vote, I don't see us not moving forward with getting the, going through with the appeal.
Certainly, the board, you know, if the board wishes me to go forward, I think we need to be mindful that we have, may have our own issues, which is what town council is basically saying, that we need to be mindful of our own, you know, if we're going to pursue this with the school committee, I think we need to be mindful that we're setting a standard that perhaps others can expect of us, which I guess is-
Well, they should. We should be just as transparent when it's possible.
So, you know, in terms of that, Jeff, I mean, we have the legal recommendation. We did take a vote. I think we, as a board, should have this discussion based on that fact. So, you know, we had a vote at the last meeting to proceed with that. So Kevin's made his thoughts known. Does anyone have any comments to my left or to my right? Because we need to address this.
I feel compelled to. I guess I was the no vote last time, two weeks ago. So if the executive session minutes are made available to us, I think the concern here, at least in my opinion, my concern is, is there content in those executive session minutes that is, that could be deemed as private as it relates to Ms. Delai's, you know, personal situation, whatever, her quality of life, circumstances of what's going on in her life or what was going on in her life, whatever. So we want to certainly be respectful of her privacy in that regard and not cause any undue pain or anguish. Now, she was in a public job, so there is an expectation that we are, as Mr. Kyra just said, we are as transparent as we can be. But I want to be aware, or be, at least be cautious about if these minutes are made available to us, can they still be kept private? And I guess I mean that private from the public, so that we don't air, I don't want to say, dirty laundry, so that we don't put Ms. Delai or members of the school committee in a compromised situation, an embarrassing situation, a personally challenging situation, which was really the reason that they were in executive session to, you know, flush this stuff out. So I'm just-
My understanding is if the record, if the appeal goes forward and they are, there's a directive to release them from the executive session, that they are a public record.
Yeah. That was my understanding as well. And that's really the impetus behind my hesitation.
And I see your point, but correct me if I'm wrong. It's not a question of if they're going to be released. It's going to be a question of when. So it's my understanding, you know, and Mr. McCoy had said it at the last meeting, that eventually these will come out. You know, they always, they have to. So in terms of censoring what's in them, we're not going to be able to do that.
My understanding in talking to John Foskett is, as a practical matter, to go through the appeal, given the time that it could take, that the point at which these become no longer subject to the executive session protection, which, as I understand, it would be in June, will have come about anyways. So my understanding is that before this would be heard, the June period would be here.
So let me ask another question to that point. So there's a difference. If we're talking, it's going to be released, and it's just a question of timeframe, meaning is it going to happen in January, February of 2017 versus June 2017? I could make a, you know, a consideration to understand that it's just a function of time. By not pursuing this, could a committee or board decide to not release it for an indefinite period of time? Or did they have a certain requirement that they, you know, is there a way to enforce the fact that as soon as, the first day that it should become available, say July 1, that they have a responsibility to release them at that time? Or could they delay it into the future, to an unknown period of time, before it ever gets released?
They could, I suppose they could delay, but then my understanding is essentially as of the end of June, June 30, the purpose which protected these minutes will have expired, and they would have no legal basis to, you know, keep those records, keep the minutes in executive session. I mean, so I guess to answer your question, the practice is that once the purpose for which an executive session was held, that purpose expires or has been met, then a public body is responsible for releasing those records. Whether entities do that precisely at that time is another question.
Right.
But if the board, I recognize that the vote was four to one. I wanted to be mindful of the implications that it may have going forward, and council does have some measure of concern. But if the board wishes to, for me to go forward on that, I certainly will.
If I may?
Yes.
I just want to add, I would agree with your comments at the beginning of this discussion that I believe we've gotten all the information that we're going to get. And the fact of the matter is, if we're going to find out all the details at the end of June anyways, then let's focus our energy on other things that can help the town. And I think we've done our job. I think we've done our due diligence here. We've explored every option. We've tried to find out as much information as we can. We've got the information from council that says we should pretty much end it. And I think we should, I think we should wait until June and find out. Until then, we could focus our energy on other things that are important to the town.
I'd like to submit a motion, if I could. Is that proper at this time? So I would like to move, and I don't know if this is appropriate, or if it makes sense from a Robert's Rules perspective, but I guess I wanted to move that we instruct the town manager to eliminate or cancel, rescind the order of the appeal to open up the executive session minutes, basically to undo the vote that we took two weeks ago. That's the short story. That's my motion. I don't know how to word it better.
I think rescind is-
Is it to rescind the order? To rescind the appeal?
The chairperson said rescind that vote.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, on the point. Just an additional concern, and no one, I don't think any, we've been advised anywhere by council, but another concern that popped into my head is if those minutes were made available prior to the June 30 deadline, not knowing anything about what those minutes might contain, if there were, or if there is any kind of language in there, or descriptions, or anything that someone could deem as inflammatory, deflamatory, whatever the word is, character injuring, are we potentially, by mistake, with all the best of intents, could we potentially be walking into a lawsuit-level set of information? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not, probably not. But, you know, gosh, it'd be a shame to, by mistake, open up a can of worms while we were, all we were doing was just trying to get a clearer understanding of what took place. And if we were talking about four years before we get a glimpse, a glimpse into these executive session minutes, maybe I'd be a little bit more on board with, let's persist. We're talking about a matter of a few extra months. I have the patience to wait, and I think it's prudent to do, given the lack of knowledge of whether or not there's negative ramifications if those minutes do become public prior to the June 30 deadline. Thank you.
The appeal is going to the Supervisor of Records, the Public Records Division, and I'm sure that they would not reveal any personal things of nature or things that are inflammatory, as you're saying. I mean, this is what their job is, to review those executive session minutes and to determine if they're eligible to be released rather than waiting. So that's why we appeal it to them.
Also, the appeal could be denied. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we don't know how long the appeal process could take. And I tend to agree with Mr. Shampoo that I don't want to run the risk of potentially putting us at a risk for a lawsuit that could potentially cost us any more than it already has. And that I would perhaps, if I would allow it, if it's appropriate, amend Mr. Shampoo's motion that we, at the end of this, the board receives- at the end of June, receives those executive session minutes when the time comes that they're released.
Again, only with that, if we go back to number four, where she may file a claim for unemployment, they can then extend that out beyond that June 30 date, as you had asked. Can it be extended? What would the circumstances be around in doing that? That could be one circumstance of that. All I'm saying is if it goes through the process to the records division, they'll give us what they deem necessary to give us so that I don't believe there would be any lawsuit for that.
If I could just make one correction. So I had indicated earlier the point that this issue, if an appeal is made, that a determination may not be made before the June 30, which would appear to be the point at which the executive session minutes no longer require that protection. I'm going back and looking at my notes again, and I just want to be clear on the the issue at hand here. So we're specifically talking about appeal, the board is looking to appeal the determination for the executive session minutes, correct? So-
It was basically the decline from Superintendent Benton. We're, my understanding is that we're appealing her denial of that request and we're asking for the same request, similar to when we got this less redacted version. We're looking to essentially submit this to Rebecca and the records people for review, that what our, respectfully stated our superintendent is issuing as a decline with her legal advice, we're essentially availing ourselves to the same appeals process that we've previously done for the less redacted separation agreement. And, you know, I'm not disputing any previous comment, other than to say, we submitted the appeal for this and we got this redacted version pretty expeditiously. And I think-
That's correct.
My previous comments at the previous meeting was simply saying that we could avail ourselves to a state-related option that already looked at one component of this whole process and rendered a decision and we're able to proceed with this and move forward. I kind of looked at this executive session piece, it's kind of in line with that other process that we just availed ourselves to. It wasn't intended to be detrimental to the town. It was more about public disclosure than it was about saying anyone's right or wrong. It's more seeking information.
So let me just be clear. So we have two, I guess, two issues at play here. One is the separation agreement, which, as we saw tonight, the request went to Public Records. Public Records came back and decided that some of that redaction was not appropriate. That, in fact, is if the board were to appeal that particular decision and seek further redaction, that is actually the piece that would then go to Superior Court and could take several months before a determination from Superior Court. So I was misstating the prior point. So if the board decides to go forward this evening and appeal the Mary, appeal Joanne Benton's denial for the executive session, that it would proceed on the same track as the previous one and presumably within the course of three or four weeks, a decision, perhaps sooner, a decision would be made by the supervisor of records as to whether those minutes can be released, so-
Correct. That's the vote that we took the last meeting and that's what I'm specifically speaking about.
So in fact, there could be a decision before June 30?
Correct. So just to be clear, we're not looking to appeal the supervisor of records decision and take it to Superior. It's not, it's very specifically about the issuance of the statement from the school department and asking for the state to intervene and look at this on behalf of the board and the committee and for the town of Wilmington and see what can or can't be released now versus waiting.
So it's not going to take a few months?
No, I was, I'm sorry, I was mis, between the two different things we have going on, I was referring to the potential appeal of the separation agreement, which is, if that were to be appealed, that would go to Superior Court, could take several months to address and clearly well beyond the time that this executive session would be protected, so to speak. Big difference.
So do you still want to leave your motion on the floor, Mr. Shampoo?
Yeah, you know what, I think I do. My points are still valid, you know, whether it's three weeks or three months. I still feel the way that I feel, and so the motion was made. It was seconded, although I certainly, I'm open to letting Greg recant his second if he's willing to, or if he wishes to, but I'd like to leave it on the table.
Okay, so we have motions are made, motion's been seconded. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of rescinding our previous vote. Okay, one, all those opposed. Okay, two, four, and three against, so it's defeated.
All right, a letter will go out within the next day to supervisor of records.
Okay. All right, so the next is regarding the open meeting law complaint.
Next is memo from me to the board. This is with regard to the Patrick Higgins allegations regarding a violation of the open meeting law, particularly on two issues, one being that the agenda posting did not list the start time of the meeting at the very top of the page, suggesting that the meeting could have started earlier before appointments. The second part of that being that the, during the meeting of December 12, when the board considered the relicensing of common victualers and alcohol establishments and the various other licenses, that in fact, the agenda should have included the specific license and the licensee and address of each of those licensees. As with the prior complaint, the board, in that instance, designated town council to respond on its behalf. And I would recommend that the same be done in this case.
So we're going to take that up under board to consider a little bit further along?
Yes.
So we'll talk about that in more detail. Okay.
Next is a memo to the board from me, is a follow-up to the conversation that took place at the prior meeting. Selectman McCoy had referenced a particular bill that was filed by Senator James Eldridge in the prior legislative session, dealing with immigration, and the bill has since been refiled this past Friday, in fact. So I provided both a copy of the previous bill, the article, which I believe was the article that Selectman McCoy was referring to, and the most current filing of that bill.
So when we had set the agenda, Jeff had asked me about putting this on and I, as a courtesy to Selectman McCoy and based on our previous conversations, as a board, I absolutely committed to putting it on here. Just to be clear with you, Michael, is the reason why I didn't put it as a board to consider was because I hadn't received it and hadn't, didn't have an opportunity to read it. So what I'd like to offer to you is that we have a discussion about it now. And if you feel inclined to want to make a motion, or anyone does, you certainly have the right to do that. But I wanted to explain to you why I didn't put it specifically as a board to consider, because we hadn't even received it, I hadn't received the packet with the information when I had set the agenda and it was posted. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying. I'll tell you what, if you feel comfortable and you want to table again to the next meeting, I can wait.
Not necessarily that. It's more the fact that I wanted to explain to you why it was listed as a memo versus a board to consider, because I didn't want to imply that we were going to be taking a vote, more than just having a discussion on it. And then I wanted to see if we could find out the timeline of when this is actually going to be, you know, taken up. Because in reading it, just jumping out in front, and I don't want to take time away from you, given any sort of presentation or feelings that you have on it. But in my reading of it, it talks about police chief involvement and opinions. So what I would say to you is I don't have an issue with talking about it tonight and even necessarily taking a vote, but it may be beneficial to seek an opinion from our police chief and maybe it doesn't need to be that complicated, but, you know, I'd certainly be open to anybody's points or comments. I just offer that out there to kind of facilitate discussion. So why don't I turn it over to you, Michael, and you take it from there?
I appreciate the fact that we're discussing it tonight. I appreciate Mr. Bendel. He was seeking more time to discuss this. I don't have a problem, maybe sending a letter to the chief of police to see what his feelings is. I mean, I know in the past, we've sent letters to our legislative delegation, you know, relative to a bill, relative to something they want to sponsor, and as a bill, you know, pros and cons to it. I just thought by, you know, seeing the editorial in the lower side, it just hit me a little bit. And I agree, I don't think President Trump is going to gather 20, 30 million illegal aliens and kick them out, but there are two to three million illegal aliens in this country that commit rape, murder, they rob. Those individuals should be, you know, get a one-way ticket out of here, obviously. You know, so I just thought this was a ridiculous bill that this senator was proposing and I was just hoping that our legislative delegation would vote against it. I think since then, I said it manager's credit, evidently it was a memo of July, January 13th and January 20. So he's made some revisions, I think, to the bill. But, you know, I just look at it and I just think it's a lot of mumbo jumbo. He's basically wants to do what he wants to do. And things change as they go through committees. I understand that, you know. So this thing could change entirely or may not even get the light of day, you know, down the road. So, I mean, I don't have a problem. Our chief of police, I have respect for Begonis, Mr. Begonis, the chief, and, you know, his people that work for him, if they want to give a recommendation, fine. But, I mean, I know it's not within our jurisdiction to actually do anything about it, but at least we can send a message to our legislative delegation to vote against this. I think it's a horrible bill. I think it's ridiculous. And once again, I think there's a lot of, I read it, like you did, a lot of mumbo jumbo in here. I think at the end of the day, he's just looking to make 351 cities and towns a safe haven for illegal aliens, especially those who commit crime. You know, the ones who commit crime, like I said, incarcerate or get them out of the country. But I don't think we're going to be, you know, there's a lot of folks here that are good folks that are obviously in the country illegally, you know. I just was looking at what he was trying to accomplish, and a safe haven for everybody. I just think it's absurd and ridiculous. But I don't mind waiting to get a response for the chief, if you would like to do that, or, you know, I'd be happy to make a motion. I don't think I want to do that now. I mean, obviously, I would like, I want to work with everybody here, especially you, Madam Chair, and if you want to get an opinion from the chief, and then maybe we can take it up on another time.
Well, we are meeting January 30 as well, so if this was something that, you know, even if we waited a week, obviously, that the intent of the 30th is to be the budget message, but doesn't preclude us to put anything else on there. I mean, I don't want to be the only voice in this conversation besides Michael. Does anyone on this board want to offer any comments at this time to help aid in this discussion? Anyone?
I would agree with Mr. McCoy. This is a, this is a crazy bill and I would support you or support the board if they so inclined to come up with a letter to our legislative delegation to vote against this, this bill filed by Senator Eldridge. And whether we go to the chief, it may be a good idea to do that, wait a week. But if you want to put a motion forward tonight, I'm ready to vote in favor of it, but if you want to wait a week, we wait.
I would have no problem putting a motion forward. I want to be respectful of everybody. And, you know, I think the chief, I'm not going to speak for him, but, you know, I think as an elected official, you know, I mean, I don't mind giving my two cents. And like I said, I've served on the board for years. We've always sent letters, not all the time, to our legislative delegations to support and not support. And I would tend to think our reps would probably do the right thing, you know, so. I mean, I'm open for discussion. I would like to maybe entertain a motion, Madam Chair, and hopefully get a second to just send a letter to our legislative delegations to be opposed to what Senator Eldridge is proposing.
Anything from any other members?
Yeah, sure. I wasn't, if it was going to be a motion, there was going to be discussion. I was going to talk then, but now's good too. I'm wrestling with this. I agree with much of what you've said, Mr. McCoy. This bill put forth by Mr. Senator Eldridge is, he's a hack. It's ridiculous. And to me, in my view, it's the creation of legislation in anticipation of something that hasn't happened yet. So I think he's panicking, he's creating an environment of fear, unnecessary fear, and certainly trying to create sanctuary cities and trying to create legislation that would require police not to uphold federal law, which I don't, that, even the idea of that seems completely preposterous to me. So I certainly don't support his legislation. I also noticed that he only has one co-sponsor on the new legislation, Juana Matias from the 16th Essex District. So, you know, this is not exactly something that's gaining a lot of momentum or interest from his colleagues. I don't anticipate or foresee that it'll get any interest up there. That all being said, I wrestle with, and I guess I have to be honest with you, I'm struggling with whether or not this rises to the level of being, of deserving a formal vote and letter on behalf of the board of selectmen. I know you're right. We certainly have done that. We've done it recently for, to our legislative delegation with regards to New England Transrail and the Olin Superfund site. We've done it in the past for, with regards to the Kinder Morgan and the gas pipeline, where it was absolutely clear and present that the impact of those projects and other projects like them in the past had a direct and immediate potential negative impact to the residents of the community of Wilmington. And this legislation, as frivolous and ridiculous as it is, I don't necessarily see the direct, absolute, and immediate negative impacts to the people of Wilmington. So that, I'm trying to determine in my brain whether or not it elevates to the level that I have, I guess, established in my own mind as to what is deserving of a board's act and action, or a board's vote. And I'm not sure that this does. So I, you know, I'm just out there for discussion. I'm sharing my feelings on it. You know, it doesn't, we each as individuals, often, I imagine, I know I do, have interaction with, communicate. I talk on the phone. I send emails to Representative Micali, Senator Tarr, Representative Gordon, on issues that are passionate to me, things that I'm serious about, that maybe we are collectively, and maybe there's a bunch of us together that are passionate about a particular issue, but we don't always take votes on it, but that never precludes us from taking action and articulating our concerns to our legislators. Shoot, we're citizens. Any citizen can do that anytime. We're elected officials, so one hopes that maybe they, you know, they read the email with a little bit extra care. So I'm not suggesting that we not do that. I guess I'm just wondering whether or not it rises to the level of us taking a vote. So I'm not saying I won't vote for it or against it. I'm just, that's where I've been on this since you introduced it two weeks ago, and it's still where I am after I read all this documentation.
If I may, I agree with you. Mr. Shampoo, I just have a question, and forgive me. I'm fairly new to this selectmen hereship, but certainly filing legislation at the state level is definitely above my pay grade, but don't we have three representatives in Senator Tarr, Representative Micali, and Representative Gordon that we could simply just ask, give a call to their office, is this something you're supporting? And if not, if they are, perhaps we discuss it again. But it sounds to me like, if I had to guess, that they're probably not. These are elected officials from both sides of the aisle, and I don't see their support indicated on the previous bill or this bill. Maybe it's worth just calling their office and asking if they're interested in supporting Senate Bill 1596, I believe it is. And if they are, then perhaps it's something we should ask the police chief about. Maybe it does rise to our level, but from my perspective, I think we have people who are paid to do this and they've represented us well in the past, and I might have to trust that they would.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, I mean, I can't go to a laundry list, but I'm willing to bet my life that. I'm sure votes that's taken at the State House- to bet my life that, I'm sure votes that's taken at the State House have, they've taken over numerous years, that people say, I can't believe they even voted for that. I mean, I think as local, state, federal officials, you know, elected officials, that I think public safety is number one. We want to make sure people in the town, women can get good drinking water, we want to make sure their rights are protected, we want to make sure they're safe. I look at this, and sometimes you need to send a message to our legislative delegations, particularly this senator, to say, we live outside your district, I don't like what you're doing, and I'm going to be heard. And I'm going to, as an elected official, I would like to make a motion to my board to say, I want to send a letter to our legislative delegation to oppose this bill. And I think we've given, I think I've given, I think other individuals give adequate reasons in doing that. You know, public safety, that's, that's number one. We've got to protect the people in our community, and at a state and a federal level, that's the president's job. Public safety, he's got to take care of us. That's the job of our state representatives, public safety, but it all starts local. I think we need to send a letter, and I'd be happy, once again, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to our legislative delegation in opposing this bill that's being presented by Senator Eldridge.
If I could just add to your point, I mean, if I was being asked to vote on this, I would be opposed to it myself, but I think Mr. Shampoo brings up a good point.
Maybe we come up with a compromise, and I apologize for interrupting you, is that Michael McCoy, Selectman McCoy, you indicated in the beginning that you'd be willing to, you know, table it. Just, I think it's worth, you know, asking the police chief, in my opinion, I certainly, if I had to vote tonight, I'd vote against it as well, so I think you'd get unanimous support. But, you know, asking the police chief and reaching out to our delegation is not a bad idea either. So, you know, I-
I understand what you're saying, Madam Chair, like, I mean, we could reach out and talk to them, but, you know, I think sometimes when they get a letter in their office, say the Board of Selectmen either voted one way or another, or city council voted one way, it's a message. We're sending a message to our legislative delegation, you know, I mean-
And I agree with you, and I'm not debating that point, and I don't want to be perceived that I'm not being aligned with you on this, because I actually am, to the extent that I'm aware of the information that I'm aware of. But we, in other votes that we take, you know, the town manager gets recommendations from Board of Health, from police chiefs, from building departments, and we utilize the resources that we have within Town Hall that deal with these issues every day. I don't deal with these issues every day in my personal life, and I feel that as a means to collaborate and to be supportive of our town personnel that get paid, and our state officials, I think it's prudent to ask their opinion before rushing to a vote out of due diligence, and maybe there's something that I haven't considered, or maybe there's one piece of information that I might glean from that exercise. And if this bill isn't going to be passed in the next two weeks, I'm not trying to make work, but I think it's part of the process of making an informed decision.
Well, with all due respect, I think I have made an informed decision. I'd like to make a motion, if there's a second, that would be great. Like I stated, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion to send a letter to our legislative delegation.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, further discussion on that, if I could. I will say that I'm going to not vote in favor of this tonight. I mentioned as, in the previous discussion, that I'm, at best, I'm on the fence on voting on sending a letter right now with the information that we have. I can foresee a situation, once I have had a conversation or received some documentation or communication from Chief Begonis, or spoken with Senator Tarr's office, I can foresee a situation where I could not be on the fence anymore and be in full support of us collectively writing a letter and each signing it on Monday of next week, perhaps. So, you know, I know you'd like to have the vote, and certainly, I'm sure you'd like to have a unanimous vote. I can't give you the vote tonight, but I'm saying it's possible that I can give you the vote next week. I share that with you.
Yeah, I don't think there's any harm in just waiting to find back. The police chief has always been very responsive. I would find it hard to believe he wouldn't get back to us before next Monday. I think we owe him that courtesy. I mean, he's always done a terrific job, and-
I want to show, I want to-
This is specific legislation, it writes it out pretty clearly here as to what it contains, and I'm opposed to this legislation, and I have no problem in having a letter drafted saying such.
Again, I'm opposed to it as well. I don't think there's anybody who's in favor of this legislation at the table. I don't think that's the question at hand here. I think Mr. Shampoo does bring up a good point, what's the harm in waiting another week, just making sure we now have all the facts.
What would you do, Mr. Shampoo, if you had two state reps, and your senator says, I agree with Eldridge, you say you oppose what Mr. Eldridge is doing, well, what would you do if he's two state reps? I don't think that's going to happen, but, you know, what would you do? If he said, oh, I think it's a great bill, I'm going to vote for it, and at least we had an opportunity to send a letter saying how we feel, you know, so, I mean, I can't, you know, once again, I don't know how they're going to vote, I shouldn't say that.
I'd answer your question this way, I'd consider myself better informed by having a conversation with people that are close to this. I probably wouldn't change my position or my view of this as being crappy legislation, but I, it would also help me formulate an opinion of our legislators if they did tell me that they believed this was good legislation. So I think it's, I think it's an exercise worth pursuing.
I made a motion, I'd like to go forward, if it was seconded, that's great, I appreciate it, and motions on the floor.
Okay, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of the motion made by Selectman McCoy. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, it's defeated. Jeff, with that being said, can you please take the actions to follow up with the police chief, and also with our state delegation to determine their viewpoints on this?
Yes.
Please, and slated for-
For next week?
We can discuss that, we don't have to commit to that based on, I don't, you and I haven't talked about the, I'm assuming you're going to need the length of the meeting, you know, for the budget, so we can talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
The next item under correspondence is a letter from Jack Cushing. I'll read this into the record. Dear Jeff, I would like to request that through the Board of Selectmen, an article be added to this year's town meeting to name the Wilmington High School Gymnasium after my father, Lawrence H. Cushing, Sr., the town's first physical education teacher slash director, recreation director, and director of athletics. His tireless energy was the driving force behind the creation of many of our sports programs, including Little League baseball, youth basketball, open gym adult basketball, adult softball, youth ice hockey programs, and any sport the townspeople showed an interest in supporting. His proudest accomplishment was being the leading component of a group of Wilmington citizens that created and sponsored a Wilmington, a town meeting article to establish the town's recreation department. This led to the beginning of the town beach, staffed by qualified lifeguards, teaching swimming and lifesaving programs. It also was the start of the summer playground program and allowed the youth the opportunity to participate in arts and crafts, and summer sports and playground games. In the winter, it was open gym night and weekend gym leagues. He was active as a non-member of the Rotary Club in raising funds to purchase and develop the property of this now known as Rotary Park, an area for the town citizens to enjoy. He extended his fundraising abilities to all town groups that requested it. My hope is that the Board of Selectmen would honor my request and sponsor an article at this year's 2017 town meeting, naming the Wilmington High School Gymnasium in memory of Lawrence H. Cushing, Sr., yours in Wilmington, Jack Cushing.
Okay, in getting this, you know, I wanted to ask Jeff, and just put it out there for discussion, you know, we had the existing high school, it's reached its end of its useful life, it was taken down, we have the new high school now, it's been an education that the names don't transfer over, so, you know, the library name didn't transfer over, the gymnasium name didn't transfer over. I should preface my comments, just so it's clear for the record, I am related to the Cushing family. I obviously don't have any financial interest in the outcome of this, but I want to just disclose that upfront. I personally believe that the gym should be named after Lawrence H. Cushing, Sr., I'll put that right out there, but I just want to understand the mechanics of availing ourselves to doing that. Is it a Board of Selectmen situation? Is it a school committee situation, depending on the purview? Is this something that should be a private petition, similar to how, you know, the Yentile family named the Yentile facility, and just recently at our last town meeting with the Harrison piece of land that was over near Adams Street? So I want to be clear, I am definitely in favor of doing this, because the building went down, but it doesn't lessen the legacy and the contribution of the gentleman and the family that it was named after. So I'm just trying to understand from a process and procedural standpoint, what's past practice, what is appropriate in this situation to give this the proper respect and merit that this letter deserves, but at the same time, not setting a precedence that gets out there publicly that we're sponsoring naming structures. Does that make sense?
So, I guess the question is to me, I, as far as I know, and I have not done any real research on this in the last couple of days, but the town does not have any formal process for the naming, other than that it is required to go to town meeting. There was a bylaw that was established a few years ago that any town property require approval of town meeting. So I think the board could sponsor, certainly has the authority and the right to sponsor an article like this on your own, that, you know, the board could suggest that Mr. Cushing obtained the necessary signatures, although quite frankly, the deadline for petition articles, I believe, is February 3rd. I know Mr. Cushing is going to be out of town for a period of time and will not be back prior to that date, so that may be problematic. You know, the other thing that perhaps the board would want to consider is to get the, an opinion from the school committee as to whether they are in agreement that, with this naming, those are all things the board should, I think, consider.
Okay, I mean, the other thing is to, I don't want to take away from this, because, you know, Jack took the time to write this, but, you know, there are other parts of the previous high school that were named after other names, I mean, is it just, we're going to take this up as families and people bring it up, or is it something where we should be looking at what our auditorium was previously named, and what our library was previously named? And if we're going to do a town-sponsored, I mean, do we capture those names and bring them forward to the new building, and do right by every family and every benefactor? And, you know, I don't want to, like I said, I'm in support of this, and I've indicated that, but, you know, I haven't, I wasn't alive when the last, I wasn't alive, so I don't know how this has been done.
I think it is, you raise a good point, that it may be advisable to agree upon a process as to how the naming should go forward in terms of buildings, whether the process of simply making a request of the Board of Selectmen to sponsor an article is adequate, or whether there should be some type of, you know, committee that's established to consider whether, whether it's, in this case, the gymnasium, or perhaps a future request for the auditorium, or any number of other spots, whether there should be some other body that considers that. I mean, I don't think there's any right or wrong answer here, but I do believe that you may, what, if you take a process now, I guess the question is, does that then become the process going forward for folks that are looking in the future to name other parts of this school or any other school? Just a question I posed, it's-
Yes, Michael.
Yeah, maybe this is something we need to bring up with our brand-new inhabitants bylaw committee. I don't know if that's something that we could use, I met with the town clerk this morning for about an hour, she was going to be proposing something. I don't know if maybe that's something that we would have to entertain, like, maybe it's not the right answer, maybe something with the town clerk, put something in, inhabitants bylaw?
Well, certainly, the-
I'm not saying that's the way to go, but I just put that out there.
Yeah, one option could be that a bylaw is established that creates a process for, you know, a more specific process for naming of town buildings or town property, other than simply bringing it to town meeting, that's an option.
I mean, I want to, I think everything that you're saying is good. I don't want my, I don't want to derail this effort, is my point. I'm like, I'm asking the pertinent questions, but I don't want to diminish the request, and it does deserve a response, and we're going to have to decide as a board if we're going to sponsor something like this. And I don't, I don't want to take away from this, but it raises other questions, and I don't want to see, you know, a great family like this that is going to get delayed through a whole process that's going to take a year or more, but at the same time, is this something that the Board of Selectmen should be sponsoring? Is this something that should be coming from the school department? You know, it is a school-orientated area, but it is a public building, so whose purview is this under? Is this, I mean, ultimately, the warrant's going to come through the Board of Selectmen, I get that, but I think we should be asking the opinion of the school committee and the school department before we just make a unilateral decision.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Hey, I would agree, I think, I would love to see this go forward, I think this is a reasonable request, and it's very appropriate. I don't think it's as if we were looking to rename this room, which I believe doesn't have a name, is that correct?
No.
Well, and, but this was obviously something that was a nice honor for the Cushing family, we just happen to have a new gymnasium. I don't see why it shouldn't, but I agree, we should try to go about this the right way. I want to try to find the right way. Perhaps this is an article that's, could be cosponsored by the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. But again, I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be upfront, when they built the new high school, I just assumed it was going to be named that. And when I found out it wasn't, I was surprised to be upfront with you, I didn't know that it didn't carry over.
You weren't alone, I didn't know either. I just figured it would, but I was wrong.
I'm embarrassed to tell you, I assumed the name's carried over. I really did, until the packet came in last week. So, I certainly think, and I agree, I would hate to see Jack's request pushed off because we get stuck in procedure. I think it, I think we can, Greg, I was, you stole my lead. I was going to suggest that we, you know, if the board was so inclined, we'd take a vote, and I hope that we would, we would support naming the gymnasium after Mr. Cushing, and then ask the school committee for a similar vote at their next meeting, whenever that is. And then, I love the idea of putting forth a joint article for the warrant. I think it ought to come from the Board of Selectmen and not necessarily go through the petition with the signatures. I think it's prudent and appropriate for us to do that, so. And then, with regards to all the other rooms, the library or otherwise, perhaps we, you know, kind of establish an agenda item for a subsequent Board of Selectmen meeting where we talk about a process for that. Do we want to engage in a specific process for transferring those over, or do we want to do that this town meeting, or whatever? But I don't want, I don't want to get derailed, to use your word, Judy, from Mr. Cushing's request here, and get stuck in that process. Maybe that's, I think that's a discussion for another meeting.
Well, I think we have, just go ahead.
I think we have a process in place now, that's someone bringing something forward, us discussing it and setting it as an article or not on the warrant. I don't think we need to establish another committee to do that. I think the process is already there. So I'm going to make a motion that the Selectmen sponsor an article, naming the Wilmington High School Gymnasium the Lawrence H. Cushing, Sr. Gymnasium.
Second of the discussion, I agree with you, Madam Chair, that just because the building's down, that doesn't mean, it's like Barrow's Auditorium, back then, the Barrow's family probably donated a lot of money to put that auditorium, you know, continue with those folks that, you know, unless, unless we can get a little money from somebody else, and today he wants to re-dedicate it, you know what I'm saying? But, you know, I see Jeff smiling, but anyway, no, I agree. You know, Cushing's a good family, I don't have an issue with them going forward with that, and, you know, maybe we should do a blanket vote for all of it, you know, fear is fear across the board for everybody. You know, if the library's named after somebody, and if the auditorium's named after the Barrow family, who I knew years and years ago, and, yeah.
I think we should just pertain to this letter and take a vote on this, and worry about the others when they come up, if they come up, if someone else petitions for a naming. Right now, we have a letter in front of us, we have a motion, a second, and let's just focus on this at this point in time. and let's just focus on this at this point in time.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. I think, just thinking about this here, I mean, I think it's appropriate. This is obviously a unique situation. This isn't like a new family coming out of the blue trying to get the gymnasium named after them. To Mr. Kira's point, we do have requests from a resident that I believe is reasonable, and in the interest of time, you noted that he prob-
It's a good family.
It's a terrific family. I think we all agree on that. I think, again, this is a unique request, and I believe it's appropriate.
It's a unique request, and it has, it has absolute merit. I mean, you know, as I said in the beginning, you know, the legacy that they have is far and wide. We're not going to have the luxury of time of really putting this through cases with the school committee either, because if we, if we don't, we're not going to have the time to do it because by the time that all gets through, the petition articles for, for people in the community, the deadline will have already passed. So we're going to have to take immediate action on it now. The only reason why I brought up the discussion points that I did was because I wanted to be fair to the process and bring everything up so we could have a discussion. Part of it selfishly is because I didn't want to be perceived as trying to put this through with a relative connection, and I wanted to be fair to all ideas on the table, but I'm absolutely prepared to support it myself as well. Yes.
To your point, to the question for the manager, perhaps you know this, perhaps you don't. Is there another school committee meeting in the near future? I mean, I just kind of piggyback on Judy's point that maybe we don't have time.
I believe the next school committee meeting is Wednesday. Is it Wednesday? I think it's Wednesday.
Could I just add something? I have no problem doing it. They're a good family, but we're the Board of Selectmen. Just because the deadline's February, that doesn't mean we can't open and close, you know, the warrants. We could do it as late as, I think, what, in March, if we really wanted to.
Yeah, to that point, I would-
It'll be an article from the Board of Selectmen, you know, because we'd be the sponsor in part.
The board, based upon the, the schedule we have, will be signing the warrant or asked to sign the warrant on March 13th. So you have a meeting on February 13th and February 27th. So if the, for whatever reason, the board decided not to act tonight, there's no reason that, so the petition deadline of February 3rd doesn't apply to the board, so the board could consider-
No, it doesn't, but if, if we decided to say that, you know, we don't want to set a precedence, and we make it an individual petitioner that has to bring it forward, Mr. Cushing will have missed his opportunity to do that. So that's what I'm, I'm not suggesting that. So I just want to be clear. I want to talk about process and procedure while understanding that I fully endorse this. So I want to look at it from a calendar mechanic standpoint, that even if we decide to open and close our warrant as Selectmen, but we don't sponsor this, Mr. Cushing has missed his window of opportunity to put it in himself with other resident-based signatures.
I think we should sponsor it. There's nothing to preclude the school committee from jumping in and saying that they sponsor it as well at their next meeting. We just inform them what we're doing, if we want to send them a copy of this letter so that they can put it on their agenda, and they can make an official vote, hopefully in favor of, and then it can be a co-sponsorship. But I think we need to move-
Yeah, no, I'm with you. I just want to make sure there wasn't some past practice or protocol. I mean, I haven't been here as long as Mr. McCoy and some other people, so I want to make sure that we're having a thorough discussion about this.
One thing I could add, perhaps it would be appropriate to maybe reach out to those who had previously had rooms named after them, and in fairness to them, and let them know that we did this. I mean, if this is something they want to pursue, I mean, the auditorium, forgive me, I forget the, the name that was named, the family that was named, it began with a B.
Barrows.
Barrows. Just in fairness to them, we should perhaps let them know.
That was kind of my concern, Greg. It was just that, because if we take, if we take action tonight with Mr. Cushing, and I want to, I think we should. My concern is that, that folks may see that happen and say, oh, wow, jeez, the auditorium isn't named. Let's get it, let's get a request down there, you know, like, let's get the Selectmen to name it after whatever, some other musician or someone that's come in. And I'm of the mind, we ought to transfer over the, the names that existed in the old high school to the new high school for those same or similar facilities. Now, we can do that after we've done Mr. Cushing, but I'd like to act on it. I know you said, Mr. Kira, we do have a process, and if someone comes to us with a request, we'll take it up and we'll, we'll vote on it. Maybe we can spearhead it and vote on them out of an appropriateness at, you know, over the course of the next couple of weeks. I'll talk about that. I'll, I'll mull that over and maybe put up, put together my own sort of board to consider. I'll talk to Judy after the meeting, but I'd love to take action on the, on the Mr. Cushing request this evening.
I agree, and I hope, to Mr. Kira's point, I hope the school committee would support it as well.
Yep.
Yes, Jeff.
I would just suggest that, you know, certainly, the process that appears is going forward seems reasonable. I, I think just recognizing that the, the school committee is part of the process and that these are buildings under the jurisdiction of the school committee, it would be appropriate to involve them in whatever, if there's an intent to go forward with other naming, that they be at the front of the process and-
I think that's a good point. I think we should take up the Lawrence Cushing piece tonight, get our vote in so that we secure the Cushing family's options, while at the same time go into the school committee, and I think we should table the other names. This is something that's a bona fide request that came to us, we're being asked to take action. And I think the consideration that you, that you talked about should be put into play. And I think, you know, we can, we can seek their endorsement to, to support us on this, but I think, I think we should take a vote. Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of supporting this? Okay, unanimous?
Okay, next is a recommendation for the appointment of Megan De La Honte to the position of Historical Commission. Megan De La Honte Kostlik, she's a resident in town here, expressed interest in serving on the Historical Commission. She did attend a recent meeting of the Historical Commission, received an email from Kathleen Delaney, who is the chair of the commission, recommending her. I met with her last week. Seems like she would be a positive contribution to the group.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion to appoint Megan De La Honte Kostlik to the Wilmington Historical Commission?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Next is a request from Julie Russo. Actually, she is, was with the American Cancer Society. She has, as I understand it, since left that post. But the individual who took over, Anne Marie Tenzella, confirmed that the request is still, that the town common be lighted purple in honor of American Cancer Society, in honor of cancer awareness for the month of May. The, one of the things, as you probably recall from other requests, the material that's used to put in the lenses needs to be replaced every year. She has agreed to pay for the cost of that. This is a practice that's been going on now for a couple of years.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion to grant the request for the town common to be lit up purple for the month of May?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Under, final item under board to consider is the designation of town council to respond on behalf of the open meeting law complaint.
Questions, comments, or a motion to designate town council to respond to the open meeting law complaint?
I move to delegate, designate the town council to respond to this.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. All right, moving on to public comments. Hearing none? Okay, moving on to new business. And I will start to my left with Selectman Shampoo.
No, no new business. As we mentioned, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, had the occasion to spend two jam-packed full days in Boston at the Heinz Convention Center at the annual Mass Municipal Association meeting and conference. And we heard from our two senators, as well as the governor. I'll, I'll really defer a lot to Jeff with regards to the preliminary sort of hints at where, where his brain is on the budget and stuff, but I just spent a lot of time walking into breakout sessions in a myriad of subjects, and had a real positive experience working side by side with our chairwoman, Judy O'Connell, who I was glad came this year. As time goes on, I haven't had, had an opportunity to really delve into the materials, which are voluminous, to be able to give you a comprehensive report, but I can simply say that it's a, it's a, it's time well spent and you collaborate with and communicate with our counterparts in much larger communities and tiny communities from across the Commonwealth. And from every conversation, you glean a little something, and a unique appreciation for, for the operations of municipal facilities. It's just, it's very, it's empowering, and it, it fills you full, full of vim and vigor. It kind of, it makes you want to hit the road again and, and get busy. So I'm filled with that. I'll, I'll let Judy articulate her perspectives of it. It was, I think, the first year that Judy took an opportunity to go. And as, as I delve through the materials, if things sort of jump out that I think are worthy of your consideration or your awareness, I'll put it aside and bring it to your attention in a couple of weeks. But thank you.
Michael?
I'm good, thank you.
Anything to clarify?
Yeah, I just want to thank my colleagues, Mr. Shampoo, Ms. O'Connell, and the manager for going to the conference. It sounds like we, you guys certainly got a lot out of it for the residents. And also, I don't want to steal your sign, but I, I don't want it to go by without congratulating our DPW. Perhaps you could allude, expand upon. I know they've received an award, so I want to congratulate them. I'm sorry if you were going to bring it up, but-
No, listen, this is, anything else?
So thank you very much, and congratulations to them.
Okay, no, that's great. So I will just start, I'll come back to that, if that's okay, and just have a couple of things. First of all, I was able to go to the Wilmington-Tuxbury Chamber of Commerce event, the meet and greet, this past week with Selectman Shampoo. Selectman Shampoo is also a member of the chamber. I went as a business owner and also as chair of this board to go to that actual outing. And I was very inspired with the new relationship that's been formed. I think it's going to be excellent for both communities to join forces together. I think it'll be great for the business community. Nancy Valli, who has become a friend as well, is a very dynamic and enthusiastic lovely lady who has really reached out to the community and has tried to really enhance chamber experiences for businesses in both communities, and I look forward to a productive relationship within that chamber organization. I will say, during that time, I had the opportunity, thankful, thank you to my colleague, to my left, Selectman Shampoo, for introducing me to some of the Selectmen in Tuxbury, who are really on the front end of their smart economic development on Tuxbury, specifically on the 38th corridor and over near the state hospital heading out towards Daskum Road. And they have reached out in a very informal way to say that they would be happy to share their ideas and experiences with this Board of Selectmen and how we can mutually benefit from best practices in that arena. So it was very, very pleasurable to meet the chair of the Tuxbury Selectmen and to meet another fellow Selectman who works for Mass DOT and has some insight as to how to work on state roads and how to avail ourselves to funding and opportunities. So I was, I was inspired by that. Second, wanted to mention, just as an FYI, that I've been working with Jeff and with Vice Chair for the Yantel Farm Development Committee, which is now our Selectman Kira, to talk about a grand opening event. We've established a date of May 13th. Programmatic details and times are not yet ready for release, but there is a rain date of May 20th. So we have started the process of an official grand opening date. And wanted to close with the Mass Municipal Conference. I had the pleasure of going. So glad that I did. I really don't know that I can succinctly describe how those two days went, but I will tell you that it was an absolute pleasure to go and represent the town of Wilmington. And I believe that we all collectively, town manager Jeffrey Hall, our assistant, town manager Dee Casey, and Michael and I went in, and I would say that we truly maximized every minute of every day in making sure that one of us or all of us was in any specific room. And wanted to say to you that, to Greg's point, the town of Wilmington did receive a risk management award for best practices, and also DPW received a risk management award as well. And what I'd like to say is that there'll be more discussion on that, and I've kindly asked Jeff, and it was actually Jeff and Dee's idea, to have DPW come in. And he specifically commented on Michael Woods, but in addition, specifically Jamie McGoldy for his efforts. So we will be getting into the very specifics and the criteria of those awards and just what this department has done to bring a shining example out to all other municipalities as to all the great work that they are doing. I was there with Jeff to receive the award, but I certainly take no credit, and we'll be, we'll be getting back to the public with more details. Relative to the breakout sessions, there were so many to choose from, and they were all running concurrently, so we weren't able to get into all of them. I will tell you, I attended the opioid substance abuse breakout session. And what I will say to you is that 351 cities and towns are dealing with this issue. The state, this Commonwealth, this country is dealing with it. When the senators and, and the governor spoke to us and any other elected official, everyone is trying to deal with this national and world epidemic. And I will tell you that right now, you know, they have indicated, you know, best practices. They had Taunton Police, the city of Lowell, other communities that have done major community outreach for this particular issue. And what I found to be revealing is the fact that, you know, they said to us in these sessions is that as elected officials, in many instances, no matter where you sit at the state, local, or federal level, you pick your issues. You pick your topics of what you want to talk about, and sometimes the issues pick you. And this is one of those cases where this issue has picked all of us, and this is going to be with us for the foreseeable future as to being an issue that we're going to have to try and address. And then, the next session that I had gone into was how to work within your municipality to develop a diverse housing stock. And what I found to be enlightening is that our Planning and Conservation Director, Valerie Gingrich, in my opinion, is on the front end of a lot of this vision, and we're doing a lot of wonderful things right now. And she definitely has brought that pulse and that tenor at the state level back to our community. I believe Wilmington, by its nature, in my opinion, is a conservative community, but I think she is very in tune with the progressive and dynamic ideas that are being rolled out at the state level. And so it was interesting to see how, how aware and entrenched in, in the awareness that we already have here in Wilmington as to what is, is going on in other cities and towns. So that's a compliment to Valerie and to town hall personnel for being very close to the issues and ideas and programs that are out there at the state level. And I would just close by saying that when I went around to the booth, I, I had a great escort in Dee Casey to go around, and I know she's still a new face to the town, but I will say that anyone and everyone that could get my ear wanted me to know not only what a wonderful, gifted, and talented employee she will be for the town of Wilmington, but that she's a wonderful person. So that was something I just want to share with you as a side note, and that was very encouraging to hear that. Jeff certainly has his rightful place there. Everybody knew Jeff, and I received wonderful, favorable compliments about our manager and our assistant town manager as I was speaking with other people. So that's refreshing as a board to get that type of feedback from other peers and respected leaders in their own respective cities and towns that we have talented professionals at our, at our, at our leadership positions here in town. And I'll just close with this and say that we heard from all of the elected officials that we have representing us at the state house in Boston. We heard from our senators, Warren Markey, and we heard from the governor as well. And what I would say to you here and those that are listening at home, they definitely feel the pulse of a change in Washington. And I would say that there's some moderate concern as to the change and the impact that this will have at the federal level and how it will cascade to cities and towns. And I don't want to give my opinion as to what I think about people's speeches and their tone and their tenor. But what I will say is that Governor Baker stood up, and I thought, regardless of whether or not you are a Democrat or a Republican, I was particularly- regardless of whether or not you are a Democrat or a Republican, I was particularly energized and I was particularly calmed by his voice and his message. And he gave a very relatable story about, a ceremony about Gold Star families. And he was saying that, you know, when you go up to someone, whether it's a military person or a Gold Star family, and you shake their hand and you thank them for their service, and that they've given the ultimate sacrifice in life by serving our military. And it's not just the person that goes into service, but it's the family that goes along with them in their hearts and minds. He said, when you shake their hand and you thank them, you don't think of them as a Democrat or a Republican. You don't think of them as what their race is, what their gender is, what their social class is, how much money they make, or their title. You think of them as a fellow American. And rather than think of us as us and them, we should all think of ourselves as we are us. This is what we have. And he said, you know, when you ask people how they're doing and how they look at life besides their personal life and their family, they really think about how things are going right in their very backyard, in their zip code. They think of it local, and they think of how is their respective town or community doing. And he said, you know, we, as a state, will be tough on issues, but we will be soft on people, and we will focus on community, and we will focus on the partnership and the enrichment at the local level. And the message was, is that he's going to stand tall, he's going to put his shoulders back, and he's going to take the change, and he's going to roll with it, and he's going to try and do what's right for the economy and what's right for the local cities and towns. And he managed his message not from a position of fear, and still has hope that in the midst of change, that we still will grow and evolve as a very positive and productive state. So I was very inspired by that, and I walked out of there feeling that we have a strong leadership team, you know, in Boston, that is aware of change, but in the midst of that is committed to working with the 351 cities and towns and partnering with places like Wilmington, to see that in the midst of change, that we come out the other side and better for it. And I think it's awakened a lot of people. I think you're going to see democracy as not be something that you teach in the history books, but I think it's going to be something where people are going to have to stand up, they're going to have to roll their sleeves up, and they're going to have to take action, and they're going to have to represent their ideas. And I will say to you that it was a great, great time, and I appreciate Mike Shampoo joining me and kind of being my host during that time. And I would encourage people to stay positive and keep doing what you're doing. And, you know, I think as this board, the best that we can do to support our, our community as the best Selectmen we can be and the best manager and Assistant Town Manager we can be, that Wilmington will be better for it. So that's the message that I took away from there. And I'll turn it over to you.
Just one item under new business. I did receive this afternoon an email from Dan Deutsch, and this, he was emailing to notify me that the Surface Transportation Board, the Office of Environmental Analysis, has posted on their docket the letter that was signed by our congressional delegation. I'll just read it into the record. This letter is directed to Chairman Daniel R. Elliott III for the Surface Transportation Board, docket number FD 34797. Chairman Elliott, as the Surface Transportation Board begins the review process for the proposed New England Trans Rail project in Wilmington and Woburn, Massachusetts, we write to encourage the STB to give consideration to the environmental and safety impacts of the proposed project. We understand that NET intends to use the roughly 50-acre Olin Chemical Superfund site as a transloading facility, which will offload materials from rail to truck, raising additional environmental concerns for the surrounding community. The Olin Chemical site was added to the National Priorities List as a superfund site in 2006, and under the direction of the Environmental Protection Agency, has been under federal remediation process since that time. Given the complexity of developing a superfund site and the potential impact of the health and safety of surrounding communities, we encourage you to carefully consider the concerns of the local and state stakeholders as you prepare the environmental impact statement for the NET project. Specifically, we encourage you to thoroughly examine potential effects of the development on the superfund site, including previous remediation work, ongoing monitoring of the site, vehicular traffic, and transport of potentially hazardous materials through Massachusetts communities. As this process progresses, please keep us apprised of any developments. Feel free to contact Kate Machette in Senator Markey's office, and provides her email address and phone number. If you have any questions, sincerely, Edward J. Markey, United States Senator, Elizabeth Warren, United States Senator, Kathleen Clark, Member of Congress, and Seth Moulton, Member of Congress.
Okay. Important dates, please.
Important dates, we have January 30th will be the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, where I will be presenting the FY 2018 budget. January 31st is the beginning of the Finance Committee meetings, first one being at 7:00 PM here in Room 9. We'll be talking about the, providing a general budget overview and also information technology and revenue for the town. February 2nd is the next Finance Committee meeting, Planning and Conservation, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals, and Board of Health. February 3rd is the last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on the town meeting warrant, coming up on April 29th, 2017. February 7th, Finance Committee meets again here in Room 9, 7:00 PM, Department of Public Works and Public Buildings. April 13th is the Board of Selectmen's meeting here in Room 9. And also would note that during that meeting will be a public ascertainment, public hearing for the Comcast license renewal, which is ongoing. February 16th, Finance Committee meets again, this time to consider police, Public Safety Department, and Fire Department.
Okay. That completes our agenda for the evening. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you, and good night.